Welcome to the Reno City Planning Commission Thursday, June eighth, twenty seventeen meeting. And if you could all rise and join our new Commissioner John Marshall in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Michelle, can I have a roll call, please?
Mark Johnson.
Here.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
Paul Levis.
Here.
John Marshall.
Here.
Troy Schneider.
Here.
Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And item number three is public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. I don't have any public comment cards. Michelle, do you have any?
No, I do not.
Okay, anyone wishing to make a public comment at this point? Seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to item number four, approval of the minutes, looking for a motion for the June eighth meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, have a motion? In a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
abstain from Commissioner Schneider.
Abstain.
And Commissioner Marshall. Moving on to item number five, city council liaison reports.
I have nothing from Councilwoman Burkas.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number six, this is our seasonal election of officers and it's amazing, but it's already been a year since you had me be your chairman, and that was the very fast year. So it's an opportunity now to have either a new chairman, a continuation of the chairman now, and a vice chairman. So looking for a motion unless Claudia, you have anything else you want to add?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiskie, I would like to nominate Chair Peter Gower as Chair again for the year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that, for that vote of confidence.
I'd like to say I'd second that.
Okay, thank you both very much. Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and looking for a similar motion then for vice chairman.
I'll make that motion. I think we remain with who we have right now, Mark Johnson.
Excellent.
Second.
Motion in a second. Thank you, Commissioner Weiskie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We will continue forward then. All right, moving on to item number seven then, public hearings. Our first item on the docket this evening is seven point one, which is case number LDC seventeen dash zero 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 six five Ranchera Equestrian Village. Andy Derling is here to give us the applicant's take on things. Troy, do you have a disclosure?
Commissioner Schneider, disclosure, I have long, long drawn out business with Wood Rogers, never ending, and I have to excuse myself from...
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider.
Yeah, I don't take that personally.
Long drawn out, right?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, Andy Derling with Wood Rogers, representing Ranchera and Reno Land Incorporated. I apologize in advance, I had some technical difficulties in my thumb drive, did not like the computer here, so I'm going old school here with thankfully I had a printout. So what we have before you tonight is the Equestrian Village for Ranchera, and again, just to give everybody a refresher on Ranchera, it's located more or less on the northeast, I'm sorry, northwest corner of Kitsky Lane and Del Monte Lane in south Reno. This request is a tentative map to establish nine custom home lots on approximately eleven acres in the Ranchera Plan Unit Development. In addition, we have special use permit requests for disturbances to a major drainage way, Evans Creek in this case, and a special use permit for cluster development. The Equestrian Village is designated as Equestrian Center on the south side of the ranch in the PUD. It does allow for one dwelling unit per acre. That one dwelling unit per acre allowance was added actually by the city council, at the city council hearing for this, so it's maybe a little bit something different than what this commission saw with the approval of the PUD was, it was again, something that was added at the city council hearing. This would allow for approximately seventeen homes on the entire Equestrian Center, and we're only asking for nine, which is a portion of the Equestrian Center. The indoor facility will still remain and act as an Equestrian facility. This is more or less just taking what would have been some of the outdoor areas and utilizing those for lots, so it's a partial discontinuation of the Equestrian Center use for the one dwelling unit per acre residential use. In this case, that area had been kind of anticipated for some outdoor, you know, horse arenas and riding facilities and things like that. I'm happy to report that since kind of the, you know, as this, this PUD matures, we've engaged with Washoe County Parks and will be making a donation to Bartley Ranch to have outdoor Equestrian facilities installed and maintained by Ranchera over there, so that'll be an amenity with trail access to the Equestrian Center, but also open to the public as a public amenity at Bartley Ranch. Michelle, could you zoom out a little bit, sorry? Just to kind of give you a little bit of refresher on where we've been and where we're at tonight, villages one, two, and three were approved in two thousand and sixteen. The PUD for those two villages, or those three villages allowed one hundred and seventy-five lots, one hundred and fourteen were approved. Village five located in the center here was approved last year. The PUD allowed thirty-five custom homes, or cottage homes, sorry, and twenty custom homes were approved. This Equestrian Village allows for seventeen homes in the PUD and nine are being proposed. So just as a kind of a grand tally, eighty-four fewer homes are, have been proposed in the first five villages. The Equestrian Village area is approximately eleven acres. We've proposed nine custom home lots. This area is bound on the west side by Lake Ditch and on the north side, kind of separating it from the majority of the ranch by Evans Creek. Similar to Village Five, this, this village will have limited site grading to create the pads for the custom homes. The idea here is to be able to maintain and retain as many of the mature trees that exist on the site as possible. Lot sizes here range from approximately a half acre to over two acres in size. The larger lots are concentrated along Del Monte Lane there and on the south side against adjacent to unincorporated county lots. So the idea here is to really maintain larger lots in one to two acres in size with a few four, specifically half acre lots located along Evans Creek adjacent to and just south of the indoor Equestrian facility. With, with the trees that are on the site, a majority of the trees along the perimeter, which would be the west and south side of the property, will be retained along with trees along Evans Creek. The, the west side and the south side, so along the Lake Ditch and then connecting down to Del Monte will be a continuation of the Lake Ditch Trail. That's also something that was added by the city council after the, this commission approved the PUD back in two thousand and fifteen. So that now is a almost three-quarter mile or so trail that will connect from, public trail that will connect from the north side of the ranch all the way down to Del Monte, which gets you pretty close to the Anderson Creek, or Anderson Park Trail system as well. So we've, we've getting large steps in the kind of regional context of, of the trail network in this, in this case. And with that, that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Andy, thank you very much, we'll get back to you with the questions. And we'll turn it over to staff for a presentation on the project, or tentative map.
Thank you Commissioners, Jeff Borkard, Associate Planner for the record. Just wanted to say that Andy did a good job highlighting it as a refresher. This is a little bit clearer map here, showing the boundary of the, of the project site. And this, and so so far, the applicant, as part of all the various different tentative maps that have come forth to the planning commission, has proposed less, less lots than what the original PUD allowed for, which has led to lower expected traffic. There are a number of conditions within the, or a number of recommended conditions within the staff report regarding landscaping and preservation, which we saw similarly in Village Five. One thing to mention is the reduction in street width beyond the allowed PUD minimum street width, which is allowed per the handbook with a approval of a tentative map. Another notable aspect of this project is the cluster development, and so the applicants keeping the same density or falling well below the one unit per acre density in order to preserve portions of Evans Creek in the trail along the boundaries of the project. With that being said, staff's available for any questions and that complete, oh, and we recommend approval, thanks.
Okay, Jeff, thanks very much. Before we get into questions and public comment, I am going to, at this point, bring it back to the commission for disclosures, and I'll start with Commissioner Weiskie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I visited the site.
Okay.
John, can you, yeah, there you go. Will you speak into the microphone for that? Will you repeat what you just said? Thank you.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Marshall there. Commissioner Gower, I visited the site.
Commissioner Johnson asked, did I?
Commissioner Hawkins visited the site and talked with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site.
Okay, thank you very much. I do not have any public comment cards on this item, but I'm going to open public comment, give everyone a chance to rush forward and make a comment. Michelle, do you have any public comment cards?
No, I do not.
Okay. Seeing no one rushing forward, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the commission, and ask for questions. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Question for Andy, if you would, please. Can you, it wasn't in your presentation, there's some stuff alluded to it in here, explain what the improvements are along Evans Creek, along the border here, and what's planned for that, the disturbance of that, and what's proposed to go back in?
Sure. Pen here. So the disturbance to Evans Creek really is just for the crossing of the main road coming into, into this village. We will be removing the existing bridge, which is located approximately right here, and we'll also be adding a pedestrian bridge, which has very, very minor disturbance to the major drainage way. So really, the predominant disturbances, you know, for the culvert crossing of the roadway, as Jeff alluded to, we do have an alternative roadway section for this. It really narrowed up the section to allow for, you know, less of a disturbance going over Evans Creek. The area, I think there's a condition in there that will require us to revegetate it in a similar state to what it is now. More or less, the border of it is going to remain as is. Right now, there's, it's fenced, there's open view fencing, kind of the three rail ranch fence that's typical at Ranchera on both sides. That will be perpetuated with the homes, so the backs of these homes will have that same kind of four, four and a half foot tall three rail fence, which is shown in the bottom here. And other than that, very little improvements will be made. Evans Creek is more or less in a natural state, although it is utilized as a irrigation conveyance channel from the Lake Ditch. There's, you know, half dozen or so users of Lake Ditch water rights to, to the east of this, so we do have a condition as part of the PUD to maintain the flow of that, so regular maintenance to go in and remove, you know, cut down reeds and things like that will continue to, to take place.
And then, thank you for bringing up the roadway section, that was my next question. Does the narrower roadway section extend all the way back to the extension of, is that the Talbot, Talbot extension that's further back there, that entire section we're seeing in gray, is that all the narrower roadway section?
Yes, so everything in gray there is the narrower section, and the justification really is, we didn't want parking on the street in front of the indoor Equestrian Center, we didn't feel like that was appropriate. Village D, which is that area there, is anticipated to be some sort of attached single family, which will park internal of itself, and so again, it didn't seem appropriate to have on-street parking, so that was eliminated. And then, really, the Equestrian Center isn't a real pedestrian generator, so we proposed just having sidewalk on the east side, and then that continues all the way around to the end of the cul-de-sac here at the trail connection to the Lake Ditch Trail.
Okay, so is there, is there any, I'm sorry, but is there any access, what's the, the parking or what access for the indoor Equestrian Center?
Sure. So the indoor, it'll have a, there's a drop off here, where you can see kind of a curved driveway, that'll be a drop off area, and then a new parking area will be built on the north side of the Equestrian Center.
Okay, so then I'm going to follow that up with a question for probably Janelle on that roadway portion there, if you can come up and, it's the, it's the turnaround that I have a question about. So based on what's proposed there, I'm sorry, I'll let you introduce yourself for the, the record.
Shawnee Donegan, Senior Engineering Technician.
Thanks Shawnee. So the area of the drop off where we've got coming in, that would be essentially creating two-way traffic a little bit in that area, is there any issue from the city's standpoint in terms of the narrow roadway width for that particular use being accessed off of that portion of the roadway?
No, because they'll have their required parking internally, and they'll just be restricted to no parking along the roadway.
Okay. All right, I think that answers that question. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, while Shawnee's still there, whoop, 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 whoop.
Commissioner Weiskie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the narrowed roadways, I had a concern about the roundabout or the cul-de-sacs, if you will, are those large enough to accommodate semi trucks with horse trailers?
So Andy Derling with Wood Rogers, I can handle that one. While the roadway sections are narrower, the cul-de-sac bulbs are standard size, so the standard size would allow for a fire truck to turn around, so if a fire truck can turn around, I would anticipate a truck and trailer could too.
Perfect, Andy, thank you. Since you're there, I have one more for you.
You bet.
Can you tell me, when we first saw this project and approved the original PUD, that area, this area that we're discussing tonight, I thought a portion of that was to be, was being planned on being used as vehicle parking, if you will, offloading of horses, that type of thing during events?
Yes.
Isn't that correct?
Yes, that is correct. It was basically going to be kind of the, the outdoor activities portion of the Equestrian Center, and with a large portion of the actual riding facilities moving to Bartley Ranch, the trailer parking that will be created on the north side will be very efficient, trailer parking, kind of a pull-through and loop around the building. So the, the overall scope of the Equestrian Center has been significantly reduced from what we originally anticipated in the PUD. Now it's more of a, kind of a riding club, and we're not anticipating as many events.
But during events, where does the parking go to? Because usually we, usually you, or the applicant's representatives, do equal transition from one parcel to another or one area to another of equal size so that there is not a loss, especially for vehicle parking?
Sure, so the, the original plan in the PUD was, and you can see, the existing parking lot right there is kind of a hybrid parking lot that allows for trailers and vehicles, it can be used for both. That parking lot is being kind of engulfed by Village D, and a new parking lot is being constructed just to the east of that as part of the improvements that are going on to the mansion. So there still will be a significant amount of parking available, it's just going to be, look a little different than it did in the original PUD.
Okay, but not equal?
Comparable, I would say.
One for one?
I, I can't say that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mincing words. Did you, Commissioner Johnson had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Commissioner Johnson.
No problem, I was, you were going exactly where I was going with that. So quick question on the, on lot one, which is sort of the long, narrow one that's there. I, I noticed there's some requirements here for various setbacks, is that, any portion of that eastern half of that lot, is there a buildable portion in there that meets the setback requirements, or is it sort of almost guaranteed to be just private backyard space?
No, there is not an area in there that would meet the setbacks to build a structure. I think as Jeff mentioned, in the staff report, there is a requirement for a forty-foot setback from Del Monte to kind of maintain the integrity of, of the Equestrian setbacks, the anticipation for those residents to the south. What we anticipate, that kind of panhandle there, this area, is that right now, it functions as a turnout space for horses, and we anticipate that would kind of be perpetuated. So it'll be an open area, yeah, a yard area for that home, possibly for a horse or two. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Okay, Commissioner Marshall?
This, there we go. Good evening, if you could, Andy, if you could stay there. The, the questions I have is, these are large, these are, I think, the largest lots in the PUD, right?
They are, correct.
And so, I don't understand where people, I assume these people, given the cost of these lots and the homes they're going to entertain, where is there going to be parking for, other than the driveway, for these lots when they decide to hold a, an event or a significant party or something like that? Where do, without, I don't understand where the, the parking will be for these, for these lots?
So typically, you know, because these are, are, as you mentioned, very large lots, you know, half acre on the north side here, and the rest are an acre to two acres in size, there's ample room on the parcel themselves to have large driveways, multi-car garages, things like that, in order to facilitate the unnecessary parking per code. If there were a special event and somebody was throwing a party or something like that, obviously that, that kind of means, you know, is a unique situation, and I think what we have as a, as a benefit in this area is, you know, this is in very close proximity to, to the mansion or what is being redone as a, as a kind of a clubhouse-type facility. And as I mentioned, for, for Commissioner Weiskie's questions, there will be, you know, over a hundred or so parking spaces for the club, so there could be some kind of sharing and of parking if, you know, on a limited basis for, you know, a handful of guests coming to a private party.
Is that part of the existing PUD and the rules in there that they'll have access to that parking, or is it...
It's all common area, so...
So there's no restrictions on who can park?
No.
If you're within the development?
I do not believe so.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiskie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, question for staff, please. Jeff, condition number four, the last sentence says, "The idling of vehicles shall be prohibited outside of the allowed construction hours." We've heard, we've had Washoe County air quality here before saying that no construction vehicles should be idling at all, how does this weigh in with that?
Gina? Claudia Hansen, planning manager, Washoe County air quality regulations would, would govern in this state, and so there would not be any idling in conflict with those regulations.
So this, then Claudia, does this allow for idling between construction hours? I don't, I don't, I mean, this just threw me off, why...
Yeah, that's a good question.
We're specifying when you can idle, but then does that open the door for when you can idle?
It's like Janelle's going to jump up there.
Yeah, Janelle Thomas, Acting Senior Civil Engineer for the record. If that language, that specific language is not acceptable, I would say that we could go back to our standard language that we've had on others, I don't believe that there was a specific reason for adding that particular sentence to this condition.
The other question I have for you, Jeff, is can you, for the benefit of the record, if nothing else, would you explain the city council asking for one unit per acre, and yet we have half acre lots in here?
Absolutely. So as, as part of the Plan Unit Development Handbook, the city council allowed for this portion of the Plan Unit Development to be used for development of single-family residential with a minimum of one acre lots. And the, if you default back to the Estates Residential Standards in the code or in the handbook, that is what standards you would normally use, that allows for cluster development. There, there's no specific standards in cluster development in the handbook, so we would default back to our, the Reno Municipal Code, which has specific standards that allows for the reduction of lot sizes in order to preserve natural or landscape features, as long as you're keeping the minimum density requirements, which in this case is one dwelling unit per acre.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, Commissioner Marshall?
There's questions on that same clustering issue, because I have, first, could you, could you walk through again how in a PUD clustering would apply if it's not specifically articulated within the PUD?
In a PUD, if it, if it doesn't specifically state something, we usually default back to the city's code standards if it's silent.
You usually, or you always, I mean, is it a rule that you always default?
There's sometimes where the, the circumstances don't apply, that's very rare, but usually we default back to the city code standards.
Okay, and so you're saying that then clustering rule can apply in, within this PUD?
Correct, it allows for cluster development within the Estates Residential Standards.
The PUD doesn't, but...
The, the PUD does. It allow, it specifically says cluster development isn't allowed use.
Within...
Within Estates Residential.
And so the, so that therefore the lot size that the city council wanted, you feel there's some kind of, that by clustering, they're, they're not getting what they wanted, which was one per acre, they're getting a, a mix of sizes that averages actually less than, that averages point eight, right, or something like that?
Correct, point eight is less than one dwelling unit per acre, they didn't, they didn't say you have to do one dwelling unit per acre. Point eight is less than one dwelling unit per acre, they're not going above and beyond one point two dwelling units per acre or something like that. Point eight is actually less than one, so we, we, we would allow that because it falls below the required minimum.
Okay, so could you just quickly walk through your analysis under chapter eighteen oh eight, two oh two, two, that runs about cluster development, because I don't, I'm not understanding where the, how all these apply to this particular part of the PUD. Are there other lands that's being preserved, and the whole purpose of clustering is to preserve another area of land, so you're clustering development off that, and so you allow higher density on the clustered part, so you can preserve open space? I'm not, how is, how's that working here? It just looks like a lot and block.
No, this is preserving open space, the Evans Creek, the Evans Creek is open space, and then the trail on the side is a landscaped feature, which is also allowed to be preserved as part of the cluster development.
So the, by clustering, you are preserving Evans Creek, wouldn't that, does that already have to be preserved?
Correct, you can, you can cluster in order to preserve things that are required to be preserved, you don't have to go above and beyond what's not required to be preserved.
So the open space, and particularly I'm looking at sections, subsection six, the open space area is at least ten percent of the gross project acreage.
Which is eleven point one acres.
So it's eleven point one, so what is, and the part, what's the ten percent that's being the one, what would that be, one point one acres?
Correct, and so that's the, that's the Evans Creek plus the, the Lake Ditch Trail.
And that was, part of that was allowed to be developed in the prior handbook? So we're getting something for allowing clustering?
The, the handbook, the handbook itself requires a trail, correct, but in terms of the gross acreage, they're allowed to shrink the lots because they are still preserving that land, whether that's required or not, they don't have to go above and beyond what's required in code. Or in the handbook.
Claudia, do you want to weigh in?
Claudia, do you want to weigh in?
I, I think Jeff's, Claudia Hansen, planning manager, I think Jeff's spot on in this. Um, so counsel, the discussion at the, um, at the adoption of the handbook, and this is not a PUD amendment, this is just a tentative map. So there is no previous handbook that we're considering tonight, it's just a tentative map. But the decis- decision to put in, to allow for, I think that when counsel discussed it, it was almost the eleventh hour of the discussion of the adoption the last time. And it was, Councilwoman Brackus, I think, brought it up to say, um, if it's not an equestrian center, let's put in L R one zoning, I think Andy, it was something to that effect, or one acre lots. Uh, but there was, there was not much discussion. So there wasn't discussion of what the buffer would be. It was just, what's it gonna be if it's not gonna be equestrian? So it was, it was sort of a, a last minute thought that, that counsel put in there. And then as far as the, um, the cluster development, Jeff's, Jeff stated the, um, the acreage there on Evans Creek and the Lake Ditch, um, were contemplated to be preserved, which can be done through cluster development. We're well under the allowed density, um, and I, I believe it meets the standards. We don't, Jeff mentioned defaulting to code, we're not defaulting to code on this one. This is, this is purely in the handbook. In the handbook, it would have to say, in absence of whatever standard, we're gonna revert back to code. It's not necessary in this case, um, and we would not go back to code unless it specifically says so in the PUD.
So, so another, another example in terms of, to, to illustrate this, we, we have major drainage waste standards in the code. Say, for example, this wasn't in a PUD, um, the major drainage waste standards require, um, us to protect a major drainage way. Um, that, that's a code standard. But a developer could say, as part of protecting this, we want to cluster our development. It wouldn't necessarily, um, wouldn't have to take the drainage way out and then cluster more and try to preserve more open space.
Keep going or wait?
Are they?
They're not related to clustering.
Not related to clustering. Are they specific questions or items for discussion?
They're specific questions.
Okay.
Actually, this is for Andy.
Yes.
You're going fairly fast and I'm fairly unfamiliar with the project, so bear with me.
My apologies.
You, you, no, no, you talked about donations to Washoe County Parks? And was that for Bartley Ranch? And that's, you're not talking about having public access within the PUD or?
There is public access within the PUD and that's, um, kind of, you know, germane to, to what the discussion was previously. The Lake Ditch Trail and the connection down to Del Monte, that was a condition of, uh, the PUD approval by the city council to have a public access trail along the Lake Ditch. So that portion is public. The, um, actually you can see right here, um, every, everything on the Ranchera's side is gated. It's a, it's a gated community, um, so there will be a gate right here and this is an equestrian access to, uh, Bartley Ranch and you can see the, the trail system actually within Bartley Ranch will be connecting to that, making improvements to that trail system for the Washoe County Parks Department, uh, as well as donating, um, basically the railings and things like that for arenas, for a couple of arenas and the footing. So all the, the special sand and things like that for the horses. And an ongoing maintenance agreement with them, because the equestrian facility at Ranchera has the specific equipment to maintain the footing in those arenas. And so, um, they will have a, a regular maintenance, uh, schedule to go across the ditch and maintain at, at Bartley Ranch, those equestrian facilities.
So that the equestrian users of your equestrian center can go over and use the?
Yes. They'll have, they'll have their own gate and then the equestrian facilities at, at Bartley Ranch are open to the public.
But it's not open the other way?
Correct. Yes. The indoor, that indoor riding facility is private.
Thank you.
Andy, Commissioner Gower, I want to follow up on that, because when we talked about this, when it came in to planning commission the first time, we had this exact discussion about the access going back and forth from Bartley to this development. And I specifically, specifically remember asking the question about public access going from the outside of the development in. And I thought that was something that we agreed to work on, that access would be provided, or is that somewhere else?
That's actually, yeah, so that, that, that discussion, what was born out of that, that discussion at the city council is, is this trail connection. So the, the Lake Ditch Trail was private, um, when, when this commission saw the PUD, uh, back in two thousand and fifteen. It was private and it, it basically was just kind of an internal looped trail system. Um, at the city council, one of the things they pushed, uh, and conditioned us to do is to continue that trail all the way down to the southern border and to connect to Del Monte and make it a public access. So there's public access easement that will be over the top of that. So now the gates are all on the east side of that trail corridor.
Okay, so when you mentioned the gates, that's a gate to the equestrian center itself? Okay, understood. Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions for you, um, related to traffic. And these questions actually may sound hypocritical when they come back to back. So the first question is related to condition number twenty-four, and Janelle, you may want to jump in on this. It's related to the traffic study and the improvements that are being considered on Talbot and McCarran. Thinking about that left turn lane on to Talbot from McCarran, ingress, egress on Talbot. I understand as this project is, um, being fully developed, and this is one phase of it, that improvements will be made. Can you give me a sense of when this particular phase comes online? When those improvements, what stage those improvements would be at?
Yes, absolutely. Um, so Village Five, uh, which this board approved, uh, like, last year, is currently in for final map review. Um, so those improvement plans, that was actually conditioned as part of that village. So the improvements to the McCarran-Talbot intersection i- is currently in for review, the building permits are in for review, the encro- encroachment permit is in for review with N dot. So those improvements will happen as part of Village Five. Um, so m- more than likely happening before this final map gets approved.
Okay.
Or they'll be under construction while this is getting processed.
Excellent. So here's the hypocritical question. I understand that traffic is a concern. I understand that you're addressing it through lowering the overall density of these villages. So my concern with that is that, as an infill development and as a, uh, an area that's really ripe for infill development and higher density development, if we have these mitigation measures in place, why are we decreasing the density in an infill area?
Uh, good question. Uh, really the, the lower density, um, in the first tentative map, which was villages one, two, and three, came out of Village Three, which is this guy here. Um, Village One and Two, which we have labeled as A on the map, um, was basically, uh, equivalent to what was approved in the PUD. So a little bit, you know, basically equal density in Village One, Two. Village Three was a little less. Village, um, Five was a little less, mostly just because, you know, to get buildable pad areas of a decent size in amongst the trees and trying to retain the trees, it drove down, um, the density in that village without going to, you know, some attached product or something like that. And, and really the market has, has been very strong for, uh, for the custom lots that are, that are being proposed here. Um, of the, I think it's forty-four lots, uh, in Villages Three and Five, um, all have been reserved and were reserved within about twenty-four hours. Um, so there, there's definitely a very strong market for the custom lots in this area. It's a desirable location. Um, Village Six and Seven, which is this area over here, the big, big area, that's actually the highest density area that's in the PUD, um, that allows for, you know, the three and four-story, uh, condominiums and things like that. Those are allowed in that area. These were always anticipated to be a little less on the western edge.
So for the one that we're looking at tonight, I mean, we're looking at half of the, the units that were considered originally.
It's also half the acreage, too. If you look at it from a gross standpoint, the other half of the acreage is still being retained as an equestrian center. So it's half that acreage, you know, eleven acres or so, uh, of the seventeen is being developed. So nine lots are being developed, uh, for the eleven acres. The rest of the acreage is, you know, the, the roadway coming in and things like that, um, which are, you know, not necessarily developable.
Okay, fair point. Commissioner Wyskey?
Andy, that brings up another question. Um, these nine proposed lots, will they be allowed to, um, have their own private stables and horse boarding areas?
Yes, as much as, uh, is allowed in, uh, you know, e- either health department code or city code.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, just one more point, Commissioner Gower. You know, one other thing in, in this case, with this particular village, because it is on the, the southern edge of, uh, you know, southern boundary of the ranch, it is adjacent to, you know, larger lots in the county. We felt it was appropriate to have larger lots and that's why the design dictated, you know, the, the one and two acre lots really on the boundary with the smaller lots in, inside here, and smaller being half acre, you know, all, everything relative there.
Right, and, and I totally understand that. And it wasn't an issue for me when I read through the staff report, but then in your presentation, when you started talking about lower densities for some of the other villages, then it kind of raised a red flag for me. That's why I wanted to pose the question. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Marshall? No? Okay. Who wants to lead us off on discussion then?
Mr. Chairman, I will.
Okay, Commissioner Wyskey?
Thank you. Um, the only issue I have is, and it's the same issue that we have when we do, um, higher density clustering of residences, and that is the narrowing of the roadways. Um, yes, a fire truck can get through it. Yes, people can travel and a, and a fire truck can turn around in the, in the roundabouts. But, or the cul-de-sacs, um, but I have a problem, as Commissioner Marshall brought up, of parking and access for kids who play, maybe not on their driveway, but in the street amongst and between houses. And yes, there's no vehicles parked on the street, so it creates a safer, safer area from a visual standpoint. But, you know, that, that street could be widened to allow parking on one side, so that when guests come, they're not parking in a no parking area and then you have a, a narrowed street with cars parked on it. Inevitably, it's not necessarily when it's ninety degrees outside or eighty degrees outside and it's sunny and nice. It happens when it's seven degrees outside, there's a foot of snow on the ground and nobody wants to park a half a mile away and walk in for a dinner party in high heels and a dress or whatever. So I am not, not that that would be me, Claudia, but it might be my wife, okay? And, um, I'm, I'm just, I have a hard time with the narrowed road for that reason. And I have it in all these developments that we s- have seen recently and I've talked about it. And I'm, um, uh, there is room, the, the larger lots, as Andy just pointed out, are to the south side of that road. And to take another ten feet off of the property line at the existing street and put parking on one side of that street, I don't think would, uh, deter anybody from buying those lots and it would, it would be a more family-oriented design, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Marshall?
My concerns kind of echo those and it really stems from, I think, a desire to maximize the number of lots that they can get out of this. And that's what drives the, um, the, uh, the thin streets. It also raises, for me, the biggest problem here is the clustering finding. Um, and I think it's, um, I guess I fundamentally probably have a disagreement with staff on, whether or not you can count as your preservation areas that are already required to be preserved. That doesn't seem to me to, to be the purpose behind, to meet the purpose behind clustering, which is to allow areas that could otherwise be developed or areas that you want to avoid to be developed to, uh, to be preserved by, uh, moving your development into the smaller area or a, a more concentrated area. This is really just, in my mind, to facilitate the largest number of lots, not to actually protect any resource, that, that's the purpose for clustering. And it also then has the result of resulting in, in, uh, narrower roads. So if you reduced the lot size, or excuse me, increased the lot size to get to the density that's, you know, that the city council seemed to, to want, you would end up with fewer lots and more areas that could be utilized for streets, wider streets and, you know, address some of the issues that have been identified. So that's, that's where, on the on, kind of the only thing that's, for me, that's sticking on this one.
Commissioner Gower, I'll respond to that. For me, the, the clustering isn't as much of an issue on this one, just because we're looking at such a small area. I think if we were looking at a little bit bigger area, you know, I would have more concern. I think that the points that Jeff brought up, um, with Evans Creek and the trail and some of the setbacks that they're accommodating, you know, I think we have that in play here. I mean, understanding that they want to hit a certain density also, but, you know, just the size of the development, I think, kind of, limits any sort of advantages of clustering. Um, I do hear the concern about the roadway width, um, and I, I don't disagree with it. I think there are some advantages of having a, a wider roadway with some parking opportunities and I would be curious to get the feedback of the applicant in terms of what the trade-offs would be, if there are any, other than smaller lot sizes. If you wouldn't mind, Andy?
So we're running the street width?
Please.
Um, really it's, uh, to some degree it's an aesthetic in this village. These are very large lots, there's only nine, um, so we're not talking about a, a huge amount of traffic generation that's coming out of these, right? There's, there's not, there's not really the, the, the pretense that there's going to be a lot of cars parked on the street, right? This is not a clustered, very dense, uh, area. These lot, these lots are, are so large, um, that there's an ability to have, you know, elongated driveways, uh, very wide driveways and be able to park not just your, your bedroom count, uh, which is the code requirement, but also have additional spaces within your driveway to do that. And, uh, I, I, I really think it's not an issue, to be honest, uh, because these lots have such large sizes. They will have larger garages, larger driveways to accommodate for off-street parking rather than on-street parking.
Commissioners, you brought up the point. How would you respond to that?
Commissioner Wyskey, I'll start. Half acre lot, Andy, is the same size lot as a lot of our larger, uh, higher-end track homes. So it's not that large. Yes, the southern lots are. I agree with that. But if you have to get a, a, an emergency vehicle down that driveway and there's full of cars, because that's where the cars are parking, how you, how, how, how does emergency respond to that? I mean, that's all of a sudden, you're parking area. Now you're asking, now you're saying that those homeowners are, are going to have parallel parking up against the edge of their paved section, which is probably, maybe fifteen feet wide, fourteen feet wide, even if they go sixteen feet wide, two cars. That, that's not adequate. I mean, that, that's not adequate for emergency. So I, I could debate it with you. I'm sharing my opinion with you at the same time, that I don't buy that argument. I don't think it's legit. I think putting it out in the public way on the southern side is going to take ten feet away from this, from those southern lots, which are one acre lots, which, you know, whether that's the correct way to measure for one unit to an acre or not, um, that's fine. But it's not taking that much away from those lots. Thank you.
Commissioner Marshall, did you want to add to that?
My only question would be, uh, but that's a, that's just a discretionary design issue for the eventual home purchaser or the lot purchaser. There's no requirements in, is there, or there, are there any requirements in the PUD that they provide X number of spaces, uh, given the lack of, of on-street parking?
There is a requirement that they provide a certain amount of spaces based on the bedroom count of the, of the home.
So it's not, it's not related at all to the absence of on-street parking?
I may defer to planning manager on this one.
Claudia Hansen, planning manager, no, they would just park at one per bedroom. There is no requirement in code for on-street parking.
So in other words, it's not, you're, you are kind of bas- So in other words, it's not, you're, you are kind of basing your argument on the fact that there may, that a future lot purchaser and home builder may decide to provide a wider parking?
Well, that can be dictated by the HOA. I mean, all of this is under a master homeowners association. Additionally, you know, in the context of the homeowners association, I mentioned earlier, the club at Ranchera, the new clubhouse that's being built, you know, inside the mansion, has a tremendous amount of parking associated with that. Every single one of the homeowners in Ranchera is automatically a member of the club, and, you know, by default, that's owned and operated by the HOA. So there, there is other parking opportunities. We just really don't feel that this is the right place to have on-street parking in an area where you're going to have very large custom homes, on large lots, kind of various state homes, where you wouldn't typically see, you know, on-street parking in those cases. You would have very long driveways, wider driveways, things like that. And that can be governed by the homeowners association.
And just to add on, I think we've already said it, but this, this proposal does meet the requirements of the handbook. There's no requirement for the on-street parking, so that would, the way the discussion is going, you would be adding a condition above and beyond what's in the handbook in the event that one of the property owners is having a special event or a party.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Commissioners, Commissioner Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, question for Jeff. Staff report, page thirteen, fourth paragraph down. Starts off with, "This project is not consistent with the following master plan findings." Could you explain that little paragraph, please?
Sure, so the, at least with the special use permit findings, you have to be substantially consistent with the city's master plan. Not every project can be one hundred percent in conformance with every master plan policy, because different master plan policies apply to different things. In this case, H10 says encourage mixed income housing. While there's not a mix of income housing within this specific village, however, overall, in the, in the general PUD, there will be a mix of various different incomes in housing. Talks about new housing developments provide access to transit. Obviously, we're not on a transit corridor, so that's not something we'd be really looking for, although it is a provision in our master plan. So I do mention these things in order to provide a balance between what's in our master plan and what's been proposed.
Main one I'm concerned with is CD twenty, and that goes back to Commissioner Wieske's widening of the road.
So, so one of the aspects throughout residential development that we like to see is detached sidewalks with landscaped parkways. However, one of the unique aspects within the Ranchera development is a lot of exist, there's a lot of existing mature trees that are on the site, and we saw this with Ranchera Village Five, where there was a requirement to protect a number of the existing mature trees. That same requirement is within this proposal. So, planning staff felt that by potentially widening the street more, you'd actually be getting rid of some of the existing mature trees rather than going through and planting brand new smaller trees rather than getting that mature tree natural look that's already existing on the site. So we felt that was fine the way that it was.
Okay, thanks, Andy? I'll let you take it from there, because we talked about trees that were going to be taken out, and you've got credit for them.
Sure, so actually, this exhibit, it's a little difficult to see on the overhead, I apologize, but there are three different colors of trees that are shown on here. Trees that are in red are, you'll see are kind of in the roadway, those will be removed because there's going to be an obstruction. Trees that are in green, those are more difficult ones to see here and here, those will be retained. And then the majority of these in the middle are shown in a blue color, those are optional. So as a homeowner comes in and wants to build a house on, say, like this lot, if they can work around certain trees but not others, we want to afford them that flexibility, but we're always going to be encouraging them to retain as many of the mature trees as possible. And there's a, there's a benefit, you get a bonus, if you will, in the required number of new trees for every tree that you retain, existing mature tree that you retain.
Okay, thanks.
You know, bring it back to the commission, I'll just continue discussion by saying that some of the information that I heard in the trade offs, and that's why I asked the question of the trade offs regarding the street width, one of the things that Jeff brought up was the trees, maintaining the trees, the feedback that Claudia gave with the code requirement being met, and it being identified in the PUD was satisfactory for me. So at this point, I'm really okay with the way things are laid out here. The only item that I have is that condition four that Commissioner Wieske brought up related to the idling. I think that definitely needs to be addressed if we're talking about changes. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. One of the things to, the roadway discussion, I think, is a good one, but I look at this also as that it's at the end of the development, it's not a throughway, it's nine homes. I was actually more concerned with the section at the equestrian area and trying to understand how that was going to be used, so that was the reason for the question there. I, I understand the concern about the parking on the street, but again, it's for a limited number of homes at the back end of the development, so I'm okay with that. I think the part that I am probably most, I guess, willing to accept in terms of the cluster development aspect of it, is that the requirement that was put on there, council standpoint, this is an area that abuts Washoe County, it's an area that butts a large lot in Washoe County. We've seen this before at Bondi Lane, where we're trying to respect the existing edge of the city and the interface with the county. And the fact that even though, yes, there are some lots that are half acre in size, the lots that abut the county, the lots that are the ones that are most impactful of our neighbors, we've, this is proposing, I think, the best alternative in terms of respecting and, and not trying to put words in the, you know, what council was thinking when they were doing it, but the idea is that we want to transition from the county into this development. And so I think the solution that's presented here makes sense. I do have, you know, the, the other discussion in terms of the trees, and that was part of the question for the setbacks in the buildable area, there's a couple of lots, I think, that are eight and nine, where with some creative work, the, the house could actually be pushed pretty close to the road, the development road, allowing for a lot of those trees to remain in the back. And I think if we, you know, the, any kind of reduction or forcing some of those things to change may get into some aspects of making it even harder to retain some of those trees with the development that occurs there. So I think my way of looking at this, I'm willing to accept the roadway because of where it's at, but I guess I'm most pleased with the way that the, the site is putting the larger lots where we need the larger lots to be from that standpoint. So with that, I feel that the, the questions that I had have been answered moving forward in terms of what they're going for, again, with the exception of that item number four.
Thank you, well said. Commissioners, other discussion items? There aren't any I'd entertain a motion?
Since I've got my mic on. In the case of LDC one seven dash zero 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 six five Ranchera Equestrian Village, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, with the modification on item number four to revise the statement about the idling of vehicles during construction hours, I move to approve the tentative map and special use permit, subject to the conditions, and I can make the findings.
If I can jump in really quickly, you said to revise the wording, did you just want to strike that last sentence?
I think, yes, strike, strike that so that it's in keeping with, with what Washoe County air quality is requiring.
Just wanted to clarify, thank you.
So, and then based on that, I can make the findings, and I meant to circle the specific one with respect to the existing physical land characteristics such as floodplain, item number eight.
Thank you. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Commissioner Hawkins, second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries with Commissioner Marshall, the nay. Bring Commissioner Snyder back here. And we'll move on, welcome back, move on on our agenda to item seven point two. This is LDC seventeen dash zero 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 six zero McCarran-Sutro Master Plan and Zoning Map Amendment. We'd certainly take a presentation from the applicant's representative. Mr. Crater, welcome.
Good evening, and thank you. For the record, my name is Ken Crater, and I am representing the owners and applicants of this site. If I can get the overhead display, it's already on there. So the site in question is located up at the intersection of Sutro and McCarron. It's right across the street from Hug High School. And we have been working quite some time now with a variety of property owners. There's actually five different parcels involved in this application to look at the highest and best use of this property. The parcels in question are located in this area right here. Just recently, I'm sure you're all aware, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency just completed a thorough housing study for the Truckee Meadows area. And as a result of that study, they basically found that by looking at other land development options, specifically intensifying development within the urban core area, that there was a potential resulting savings in infrastructure costs of about eight hundred million dollars. And it makes sense, building houses out in Spanish Springs or South Meadows requires longer runs of streets, sewers, storm drains, et cetera. There's less chance of children being able to walk to school. So we looked at these five parcels that are basically on McCarron Boulevard, Sutro Street, which is ultimately planned for another interchange on US three ninety-five. It's adjacent to schools, shopping, close range to services, police services, fire services. This little parcel right here at the corner is owned by the Truckee Meadows Water Authority. There's a brand new booster pump station there. So we felt that this site warranted, because of all those services and location and adjacency of existing high density services, that it made sense to look at intensifying the site. In fact, if you look at the current zoning, you can see that there's a mix of neighborhood commercial, MF thirty, more MF thirty. And the other thing that was an issue at this site, the planning commission and council did recently approve a zone change on this specific piece to MF twenty-one, but you still have pockets of industrial zoning in this area that aren't necessarily compatible with the adjoining schools and residential uses. You can see an aerial photo that shows the site. The building here is a Sikh church. They've recently added some parking and basketball courts on this area. This is an older industrial building that recently had some improvements to it. The old KOZZ radio site that I know we're all familiar with, which is the site where the Maverick special use permit was recently approved, vacant parcel here, and the Tomah Booster Station. So, again, if you look at the existing master plan designation of that site, it's basically mixed residential, which typically allows up to fourteen to twenty-one dwelling units per acre. We're proposing that all of those parcels have a new land use designation of urban residential commercial, which would allow for a wider variety of housing and commercial needs to basically accommodate the growth that's happening within our Truckee Meadows area. And again, you can look at the existing zoning, you've got MF twenty-one, two industrial zone parcels, and public facility. We're basically saying leave the public facility and the Sikh church alone. The small industrial parcel would change, and both of these parcels would become community commercial. The owner of the industrial parcel, Ken Brown, we worked with him closely, and since he does have an existing industrial use, he was concerned about becoming a non-conforming use with the zone change at this point. But the good news is by amending that land use plan, he realizes that it creates more value and ultimately that that industrial use will go away, and there, at that time, will be a zone change request to more of a housing or a commercial type use. So we believe that this project makes sense, that it fits within the requirements of the City of Reno master plan. As far as the findings and all the different policies, again, it's got access to a full range of services. It takes access from arterial and collector streets, and it's got access to both private and public utilities. There's sewer, storm drain, natural gas, electric. So we think this is just something that makes sense, given the current growth patterns of the neighborhood. It will get rid of one industrial zone parcel, property, and set the stage for the eventual rezoning of this piece, leaving the only industrial zone parcel in this whole area, that piece to the north. So we're in full agreement with the staff report. We did have both Ward Four Neighborhood Advisory Board presentation. I don't believe there was any comments in the staff report from, from those folks. And then also, we held a neighborhood meeting in accordance with Nevada revised statute requirements, and just had that recently, a couple of weeks ago, I think there was five or six people in attendance, and most, I think, saw the benefits of the change. One person was concerned about the lack of commercial in this area. But I think it is also important to note that this is not a project, this is just a land use and a zoning change. But it was clear, based on the neighborhood meeting that we recently had, that we're going to need to do some outreach with those folks when we do come in with a specific project. There was concerns about Somi Drive being a long straight street with a lot of multifamily on there and a lot of traffic. So I've already been in contact with the Silver Knowles Homeowners Association. I was hoping to go before their group in July, but they canceled the meeting. But I will reach out to those folks to see when we come forward with the project, to look at some sort of traffic calming in that area, to see if we can rectify some of the existing issues in the neighborhood. So I hope that you're in support of this request, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ken, thanks very much. We'll get back to you on the questions, and we'll turn it over to staff. Heather, welcome.
Good evening, Chair Gower, and Planning Commissioners Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner for the record. The applicant laid out the request for master plan amendment and zone change very well. I did want to note, he had mentioned it in his presentation, but I did want to reiterate the fact that the applicant that owns the industrial zoned property along McCarron is not including their property as a part of the zone change request. The zone change request will just cover the old KOZZ site, which is now being constructed as a Maverick gas station, and the vacant parcel to the north of that. The master plan amendment does cover all five parcels. The Ward Four NAB did review the project and did not provide any comments. I did receive one email from a citizen who was concerned and opposed to the request noting that there were existing traffic and access issues within this area. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we get to any public comment, I'm going to ask the commissioners for disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site and received email.
Commissioner Hawkins, as did I.
Commissioner Johnson, as did I.
Commissioner Gower, I am familiar with the site from a previous visit and received email.
I drove by it yesterday. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Snyder, I'm familiar with the site and received email.
Commissioner Wieske, I visited the site and received an email.
Thank you. This time, I will open up public comment. Michelle, do you have any comment cards on this one?
For this item.
Okay, anyone wishing to make a public comment on this one? Seeing none, I will close public comment then and bring it back to the commission for questions. Mr. Hawkins?
This one's for Janelle. I taped off the choke point on Sutro up there at twenty-five feet in between traffic. What are we going to do about widening that choke point before we do what we're going to do tonight? What are we going to do about widening that choke point before we do what we're going to do tonight?
Uh, Janelle Thomas, Acting Senior Civil Engineer for the Record. I am working with the current applicant, who is working on the Maverick station. I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to discuss some alternative modifications to that intersection.
Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager, I just want to jump out. That's a separate applicant than the one requesting the master plan and zone change. Two different requests. One said building permit.
Right.
And this is before it turns into a master plan and zone change.
That is correct.
Good clarification.
Somewhere in my staff packet, I read that we that area coming in south, coming off the condominiums into McCarran at that stoplight, has, that intersection coming in has to be the same as the other three intersections? Is that, that what I'm looking at?
Uh, I'm not sure if I understand your-
If I have turn lanes and, and travel lanes on McCarran on both sides, and I'm coming up Sutro northbound into that area, I believe I have to have all four of my areas has to be the same. I can't, I can't go from two turning lanes and two travel lanes to one and one up on the hill.
Uh, we would analyze that from a traffic engineering perspective and look at the receiving leg of the intersection in relation to the contributing leg. And then we would, we would analyze that to determine if there were any modifications needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nowitzki.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Heather?
Last week, we had an evening full of discussion regarding the elimination of industrial for multifamily and multifamily for industrial. Why this week are we getting rid of industrial and it's okay to exchange it for multifamily?
So, you're speaking of the site that the Maverick is being constructed on now. A special use permit was approved for that project with the industrial zoning. It was allowed in the industrial zone. In this case, we have a couple of small pieces of industrial zoned property in the urban core where industrial uses are not compatible with the surrounding residents and, and residentially zoned properties. And so, as a part of the master plan, it's, it's master plan mixed residential and identified for, currently for primarily residential uses, the request to change that master plan to urban residential commercial, commercial would introduce additional commercial uses along with residential in this area.
Okay, so maybe I misread my staff report then. The Mavericks does, a gas station does not need to be industrial zoned?
Correct. The, whether it be industrial zoned or community commercial zoned, if it were proposed with a CC zone, it would require a special use permit, same as industrial.
Okay, so it won't be in non-conformance any more than the I zoning, the little piece between the MF21, the Sikh temple property, and the Mavericks. That, that's not going to be a non-conforming piece either.
Correct.
Nor is the one to the north on the other side of Selmy.
Um, the Maverick station, if the CC zoning and, and the master plan amendment were approved, would not be non-conforming. It would be in conformance with the zone and master plan. Uh, the industrial parcel that is located between the Sikh site and the Maverick, if a zone change were requested to CC and, for example, it would be a non-conforming use within that zone. And so, the applicant, or the property owner withheld their option to propose a zone change on that side.
Okay, and that's why they're keep, they're staying out of this, and they're keeping an eye now so that they are a conforming use based upon their existing zoning.
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Commissioners, discussion? Motion?
One question.
Mr. Hawkins' question.
Uh, and this is probably for Mr. Crater. On page three, right at the top, talking about the SUP conditions. Can you explain to me why it says the SUP conditions of approval for the Maverick as approved by SUP will continue to be applicable to this project? Is there a carryover from the Maverick to your property?
I believe what staff is getting to with that statement, and Heather can correct me if I'm wrong, is just as she was talking about the fact that if the city council, the planning commission, city council approve this application, that the Maverick will be a conforming use, and their existing conditions of approval will remain in place in perpetuity. And they'll still have to abide all of those conditions of approval. Simple as that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Heather, just a point of clarification, if you could. Just to maybe go back to the point that Commissioner Nowitzki raised. One of the biggest issues that we have with the industrial zoning in places like this is the adjacency to residentially zoned properties. And, and whenever we have that, similar to what we had for the Maverick, it required a special use permit and a review by this body to make sure that it works. We also changed the zoning, or accepted the change of the zoning, to a multifamily in the parcel that's adjacent to the water plant. So, just to make sure I'm clear on this, if we change the zoning for this, as well as the master plan designation, and somebody, and I believe I read it in here, but if somebody wanted to come in with something that wasn't residential in nature, that was commercial in nature, or similar to that, they'll still be required to meet, to get a special use permit for that, based on their adjacency to the other residentially zoned properties.
That's correct. Um, with regard to the two properties that are zoned, that may be zoned community commercial if the MAP amendments are approved, any non-residential use for either one of those properties would still require a special use permit because of the residential adjacency associated with the Sikh property to the east.
And that was, thank you, because I just wanted to make sure and get that on the record, that if we do approve the change of the zone, we're not lessening the protections that are in place for review of projects based on the other residential areas and the concerns that we run into with the, the current zoning of the industrial. So, all of that would still be in place should this zone change be recommended.
That's correct. And with the industrial zoning, industrial zoning allows for a lot, a wide variety of uses that are not compatible with residential properties. And so, in this case, I would say we are, if the MAP amendment is approved, we're actually improving the situation by further eliminating or reducing the ability for industrial uses to locate in this area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nowitzki?
Mr. Chairman, if you're ready for a motion, I'm ready to make it.
I am ready for a motion.
In the case of LDC... I'm sorry. In, in, in the case of LDC 17-00060 McCarran-Sutro Master Plan and Zoning Map Amendment, based upon compliance with the applicable considerations, I move to adopt the amendment to the master plan by resolution and recommend that city council do the same, subject to the conformance review by the regional planning agency, and recommend the city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Snyder?
Commissioner Snyder, I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item 7.3. Case number LDC 17-00049 Sierra Senior Care PUD Amendment. And we will begin with a presentation from the applicant's representative. When she's ready, Angela, welcome.
Good evening. For the record, Angela Foose with Loomis Engineering today, representing the applicant. And in just one moment, we'll have a presentation. There we go. This is the Sierra Senior Care PUD amendment, and there's, there's been a lot of history on this project. So, for some of you that have been on this commission for a few years, you'll remember, for those of you that are new, I'm going to try and bring you up to date as to when this project was approved, what was going on, and how we got to where we're at today. So, to start with, this project is on 3.2 acres. It's located over by Virginia Lake. On the east side, we have the Dog Park. On the north side, we have Mountain View Drive. On the south side is a brand-new 44-unit apartment project that just had their ground opening within the last two weeks. On the south side of that is a condo project that's been around since probably the 1960s. And then on the west side is also more condos that have also been around for quite some time. To go back in history, back in 2008, the, at that time, the property owner came forward with a request to change the zoning to multifamily. At that time, it had a mix of different zoning. Some of it was single-family, some of it was multifamily. So, the idea was to take a five-acre site and bring forward a zone change. The Planning Commission approved that zone change, but when it got to city council, there was a lot of community opposition. So, at that time, the applicant pulled back their request and said, "We'll come back when we have something that the community would be okay with." So, fast forward to 2011. The applicant at that time and the property owner worked together with the neighborhood, and they came forward with the PUD. Now, you don't typically designate a PUD for a five-acre site in an infill area where you have basically one type of use. But in this situation, because there was so, so much community opposition to not wanting development unless they knew exactly what was going to be developed, it was developed under those guidelines. So, it was kind of a tiered senior facility. One of the buildings had a 94-bed skilled nursing. Another building had a 48-bed memory care facility. And then there were some independent living cottages. So, again, where you could start out here as 55 and older, and then as you needed to progress potentially into a more of a memory care facility or a skilled nursing, this was the type of overall facility that allowed you to do that. The recession hit, and unfortunately, that project went away. So, fast forward a couple more years. Back in 2015, we came forward with the PUD amendment. That amendment deleted the 94-bed skilled nursing facility and added a 44-unit apartment project. The picture on the right is that now constructed 44-unit apartment project. So, that took place over two acres. The remaining three acres is what's left today. So, the request before you today is to modify that handbook to get rid of the 48-bed memory care facility, get rid of the 12 independent living cottages, and replace that with basically one building that's a combination of memory care and assisted living. So, that's the history of the PUD that's been approved. As you recall, it was 2016 where we also had an amendment that came before you. That amendment was to replace, again, the three acres that's up for discussion. So, the 48-bed memory care and the independent, independent living cottages, replace that with a 72-bed skilled nursing facility. This commission approved that. When it went to city council, city council denied that request. So, we took the feedback we got from city council, and we made some changes. Here's a couple of the, the big things. So, the, the picture on the left is what can be built today. So, again, this is what was approved back in 2011. It's still in place today. The picture on the white, the right, is what is proposed. At the very bottom there, I just put a little call-out, so you could see the 44-unit apartments is currently constructed, whereas previously, when this handbook was initially approved, that's where the skilled nursing facility was proposed to go. So, one of the big comments we got from city council and from the neighborhood from a year ago was skilled nursing, at that time, the proposal allowed for a rehab facility. So, if you break your hip, you go to the hospital, then they send you to rehab. At that time, the project was proposed to be more of a rehab facility where your, your turnover rate averages about 21 days, again, depending on what you're there for. So, a lot of the neighbors felt that that was more transitional and not long-term, and their preference was to have more of a long-term facility where people are living there rather than there on a temporary basis. But also, kind of fed into how much traffic was going to be generated. And while you wouldn't get a lot of traffic from the people staying there for rehab, you would probably have more traffic because you have more visitors. So, if you're getting rehab, you tend to have more visitors on a daily basis or a weekly basis compared to if you're living there full-time, where maybe you have more visitors on Mother's Day, Christmas, Easter. You know, not, not as often. So, we changed what was being proposed to kind of fit in more with a long-term residence. And that's, again, where we went back to memory care and the assisted living. In terms of the building layout, as you can see, the main building, the footprint of that building is pretty much the same as what was initially approved. In terms of square footage, the proposed building is two stories, where initially, this building was one story. The building footprint, however, is actually smaller in size than what was initially approved. So, while you're going up two stories, you're actually, footprint-wise, less square footage. Parking. We have two places where we have parking. The first area is accessed off of Mountain View to the north, and that is where your visitors come. So, if you're coming to visit a loved one, you would park off of Mountain View in that parking area there. If you're an employee, you actually access off of Lakeside and Beck Street to the south. And all the employees have a separate parking lot there on the east side. Those two parking lots are physically separated by a gate, so that we don't have a lot of pass-through. If there's an emergency and there's a fire situation, that gate would be removed and you could get through, but on a day-to-day basis, that gate stays, stays closed. And all the employees obviously would know where to park, because as they come in for their job interview, they would tell them, "You've been hired." This is where the employees park. Traffic. So, traffic, again, was one of the big concerns we talked about last year when we went through this. And there's a couple things that we, we base traffic on. You can base it on number of beds, and you can also base it on number of employees. And over the last four months, we've had a lot of discussions with staff, a lot of community input on what are the actual traffic numbers. So, staff said, "Well, we can base it on number of employees, but we have really no way to regulate number of employees." So, if you have, you know, your highest peak, we set at our highest peak shift, we have three different shifts, how many employees do you have? Said, "Max, probably around 30." What about during the busy times like Christmas, when you're going to have more people coming because there's events going on, or Christmas parties going, going on? How do you account for that traffic? One thing that we keep in mind when we deal with traffic, just in general, it doesn't matter what the use is, we base traffic on some kind of national standard. We don't base it on the worst-case scenario. My favorite example is Black Friday. Do we base parking for shopping centers on Black Friday? Or do we base it on some kind of standard? We don't base, base it on the worst-case scenario. Same with an HOA. If you're having a party at your house, should parking be based on how many people are coming to your party? Probably not, because there's no parking that the city could ever provide to prepare for that worst-case scenario. So, again, you base it on some national standard. Based on that information, then, regardless if this is memory care, assisted living, or skilled nursing, none of the traffic levels generate enough traffic to warrant justification of changing any of these roads. Lakeside is designed to have over 13,000 traffic trips. They have about 5,600 traffic trips. That tells me we could double the amount of traffic on Lakeside before it trips going into a level of service that warrants changes. Well, what about Mountain View and Beck Street? And those are the two streets that we impact the most. Same thing. Maximum, you should only have about 1,000 trips on those two roads. We're less than 560, so we still have almost double the capacity on both Mountain View and Beck Street before anything is warranted for change on those roads. Setbacks is another big one. On the, the picture on the right, one thing that we did do is we added a pretty wide buffer. That's a landscape buffer. And we took out where there would be parking from the project that was proved, by you guys, approved a year ago. We modified this so that there is no parking facing Mountain View. So, there's one house on the other side of Mountain View, so there's no chance that there's ever going to be headlights shining on that property. Another thing that we looked at is safety and speed on Mountain View. When that apartment project was built, that's the one, the Hillside Meadows, one of the requirements was that they had to put in a speed hump. So, that was done and constructed before the project was opened. Within the last couple of months, the city's actually gone out and put in a second speed hump on Mountain View. So, Mountain View now has two speed humps where they did not have those before. One thing that we have put in the handbook is to evaluate that intersection on Mountain View and Lakeside. We have to look at it in terms of, is there a need for a crosswalk there, and what about Flashers? So, we put some language in the handbook and that we would work with staff to see if that's the most appropriate location for another crosswalk in Flashers, or if there's somewhere else more along Lakeside Drive that would be appropriate. And again, the idea is you're going to have pedestrians, you know, if you go to visit your loved one, you may want to go out and take a walk. So, we just- So we just want to make sure that that, that road, that access area on Mountain View and Lakeside is appropriate for the users that are going to be living here. And the arrows there on the red, those show you the two access points. Again, north, we have Mountain View, and that's where all the visitors park. And on the south side, we have Beck Street, and that's where all the employees will come in. This is a graphic that has a lot of detail, but it gives you basically a breakdown from the original PUD approval in 2011 to what was approved, which is in place today in 2015, to what was approved by you but denied by City Council a year ago in 2016, to what's proposed today. So the bulk of this is stuff we've already talked about. The square footage of the building. So while we're adding more square footage, because we're going two stories, the building footprint is actually smaller than in any of the previous PUD approvals. In terms of ambulance trips, we had worked with District Health and REMZA to try and come up with some idea of how many ambulance trips there would be if it was based on a skilled nursing facility versus an assisted-living facility. So they gave us some information. Trip generation. Again, you can do that by employee, or you can do that by bed count. So here's some information based on number of employees. And then the traffic key areas, Mountain View and Beck Street. What we're showing is, it's changed from the 2011 to the 2017. Generally speaking, it's about the same. We're slightly less than, based on this graphic. But the big picture is, again, going back to traffic. Some people may say, "10 more cars on my road is too much traffic." Others may say, "1,000 more cars on my road, I'm okay with that." So rather than basing traffic on emotion, we go back to that standard. And again, the standard is, on Beck Street and on Mountain View, you can have up to 1,000 trips without tripping that change in level of service. We're at 560, so we are well within the approved traffic that can be generated on these roads. Setbacks. Again, we have pretty wide setbacks. From, from Mountain View to our building is about 160 feet. We do have that wide landscape area where we wanted to make it feel and look more like a park setting. So there's already sidewalks on Mountain View that was constructed as part of the apartment project, so the pedestrian connection now actually feels like you're walking next to a park. Building height. That's been consistent the entire time. This PUD has allowed for a 35-foot-tall building and two stories, so that's been consistent. That hasn't changed. Impacts to schools. Because this is a senior-type facility, there are no impacts to schools except for that affordable housing project that's now constructed. Here are some building elevations. We had a lot of discussion, again, with staff and with the neighborhood about what is an appropriate look to this building? They wanted it to be something that fit in with the neighborhood, so we tried to put in some gables, a mix of colors that looked more residential, a mix of materials as well. And then here's a rendering to give you an idea of, if you were on Audubon and Mountain View, this is the view that you would see. One thing that we definitely took input from City Council was, reach out to the community. So in addition to going to the NAV, which every project does, we held about five community meetings, and we reached out to everyone that was within 1,000 feet, as well as everyone that had previously signed a petition in opposition to this project. So we had over 600 names and addresses that we sent personal letters to inviting them to meetings. We reached out to the Lakeside Condos, which is the project to the south of this project, because they're impacted, because they also use Beck Street to the south. So we reached out to their HOA board, and then we hold a community-wide meeting. And then we held two more meetings on top of that, again, where we invited anyone and everyone that wanted to come. We had very low turnout in terms of the number of letters I sent out. Again, if I sent out over 600, I think the max number of people we had at any one meeting was probably 20. So in terms of reaching out, I felt that we covered that to the best of our ability. Even being here tonight, I'm not seeing a whole lot of people. I remember from a year ago, this room was packed with opposition. And one thing we had not done previously was reached out as well as we could have. So we made sure, and we hit that this time, that we could get that input and make sure that those changes were incorporated. So with that, I'll reserve the rest of my time for questions and comments after. Thank you.
Okay, Angela, thank you very much. Jeff, welcome back.
Good evening. Again, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Jeff Borcard, Associate Planner for the record. Angela did a great job highlighting the PUD. One of the things to note is that this specific PUD is very specific. It has a lot of specificity in order to ensure, give the residents some assurance as to what would happen here, exactly what would happen here. Typically, when you see a PUD, you would have just general standards that you would apply, much like a zoning code, that would allow variety of different types of uses or developments that could potentially occur. This one, you could, you could have one thing that could occur, and that's pretty much what you get. And so what the applicant's actually doing is proposing an amendment to have something similar, but as an alternative to the 12 cottages and the memory care facility. So with that being said, the proposed amendments to the handbook contain standards for architecture, height, setbacks, landscaping, parking, et cetera, to make sure that it is very specific that this is the project that, that they will get once building permits come into place. One of the key things to highlight, Angela showed a similar chart, but this is a chart prepared by staff that was included in your staff report and as an exhibit. And I wanted to highlight that staff did also work with the Washington County Health District, and we, we calculated the apartments and the total impact of the PUD when it comes to emergency vehicle trips. And so in the original approval in 2011, we had 10. In the 2015 approval, which is what the current state of the site is, there was eight. In the prior proposal that was denied by the City Council, there was 13 per month. And with this current proposal, that would be 12 emergency vehicles per month is what is an average anticipated. When it comes to trip generation, Angela mentioned that there's a couple ways that you can calculate trips for this site. One's by number of employees, which is probably a far more accurate way to calculate trips. It gives a lot more specificity in terms of how the site would actually function. But, but staff felt that there's not really a way to, to regulate how many people are working there. We're not going to knock on their door and say, "Hey, how many people are working today? We just don't have the ability to do that." So one of the things that would remain constant and that we can keep track of is number of beds, because anytime they would want to change the site, it would require building permits, which would then require a review by city staff. And so we also have them calculate by number of beds. So just as a comparison between the current existing PUD, which is the 27, the 2015-approved PUD versus the current proposal, I included this chart in your staff report as well. So it kind of shows the difference in calculating by number of employees versus calculating by number of beds. So you see, the ADT is, is 26 more than the 2015, the current existing state with this proposed, and that would be four more AM peak hour and seven more PM peak hour. With the, if you calculate by beds, of course, it goes up, because it becomes more general in terms of how it's calculated. However, if Plum Healthcare decides to leave this facility and another operator comes into effect, since the PUD runs with the life of the land, this would be something that would allow more flexibility for somebody to come in and operate, maybe with more employees on the site. Maybe it might be 40 employees. But this gives a far more accurate calculation in terms of what could potentially happen if, throughout the life of the project. And so that would say, that's 134 extra average daily trips. Now, what Angela mentioned was, Lakeside currently operates with a threshold of Level Service D. So that's what the city's goal is to achieve, and we don't want to go beyond that goal. Well, that goal threshold is 13,400 trips. With this proposed project, it's supposed, it's proposed to be at 5,631, so far below that 13,000 level. And then the same goes for the two local streets, both Mountain View and Beck Street. Both have significantly less trips than what that threshold would trigger to, to see a difference. Another thing to note is that the proposed difference here, and even the proposal for the entire PUD, doesn't trigger, i- if this were just a regular project coming in, it wouldn't trigger the need, per our code, for a traffic impact analysis. But the applicant's provided one, provided a lot more detail. So I think that concludes the general presentation. I wanted to note that the applicant did hold five neighborhood meetings. I was at most of those meetings. And two of them were noticed to property owners within 1,000 feet. They also attended the Ward 2 NAV meeting, and the NAV was concerned about the items that Angela pointed out with regards to traffic, emergency vehicles, and the compatibility of the building with the surrounding neighborhood. As of this morning, I had two letters and one phone call in opposition to the project, and then two letters in favor of the project. And you have received all the letters. So with that being said, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Great presentation. I do have a few public comment cards on this item. Before we get to those, I'm going to ask the commissioners for disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site and received email.
Commissioner Hawkins visited the site, talked with the applicant's representative, and received emails.
Commissioner Johnson, I live within the distance of the noticing of the site, spoken with the applicant's representative, received emails, attended one of the neighborhood meetings. I think that's it.
Okay. I'm sure you've been by the site, too.
Twice today.
Thank you. Commissioner Gower, I visited the site and received emails.
I looked at the property the other day.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schneider, visited the site, received emails.
Commissioner Wieski, as did I.
Okay. Thank you very much, commissioners. At this point, I'm going to open public comment, and we did receive an email request. Before I get to the public comment cards, I am going to mention that I received a letter from Jeff Bialla, as did the other planning commissioners, and the letter is in opposition to the project. It's a fairly lengthy letter, and I'm not sure that I can get it into three minutes, but it is received. It's in the record. So we're going to leave that at that, and we will move on to our commenters here in the room today, beginning with Rachel Pitts, please. And Rachel will be followed by Carl Friedman. And if you give it to the clerk, too, she can hand it out. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Rachel Pitts. I've given you a copy of my comments. I attended a presentation by the developer on March 27 concerning the requested increase in the proposed senior care facility. I would characterize the facility as commercial in nature. It will operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There will be shift changes, delivery trucks, city trucks, and visitors. The neighborhood itself is primarily residential and recreational in nature. The streets are narrow collector streets, and at this time, the traffic and on-street parking are considerable in this neighborhood. It may be easy to forget how many people live in this neighborhood. There were lots of multifamily units, and two developments are presently under construction, one soon to be occupied, which is the Hillside Apartments. All this will contribute to the traffic. So I've done a, tried to do an analysis of how many people live in the Lakeside Drive and Beck Street area by counting the parking places. And I came up with approximately 358 parking places. Now, if each of those cars takes one trip a day, that's 358 trips. And this summary does not include spaces at Lakeside Manor, the senior care, the single-family dwellings, or the pass-through traffic between Moana and Plum lanes. Okay? Or the parking on Lakeside Drive. The Hillside Meadows Apartments, people are moving into those now, and the Mallard Crossing Development is not yet under construction, but I'm guessing maybe 24 parking places for the Mallard Development. Okay, the senior care developer proposes to add 254 trips a day on Beck Street. And there will be a chain on the property that will prevent cross-traffic through the development. In other words, most of the traffic will go on, on Beck Street and also through the Hillside Apartments parking lot. So that's, I don't really understand that. I think when this PUD was approved, there should have been a cross-street required that goes between Beck and Mountain View Drive, because the neighborhood already has poor traffic circulation in general. So anyway, if you've been to the new Hillside Apartments, you will see the front parking lot there is going to be the main traffic corridor for these additional 254 trips a day. I, I, I don't think 1,000 trips a day on these little streets is really appropriate. Maybe the streets department thinks that's okay, but I think we already have plenty of traffic. So thank you for your time. I, I don't think this, this amendment should be approved.
Okay. Rachel, thank you. Carl Friedman. After Carl, I have Juanita Cox.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Carl Friedman. I own a unit in 2955 Lakeside Drive. I'm opposed to the zoning change. As you know, this has already been addressed more, more than once before, and it has been turned down. One of the things I wanted to address most importantly is the traffic specified by, I believe it's Angela. She said we have currently 5,600 trips, and we can have up to 13,000. Has she considered, on the other side of Beck Street, there are two 15-mile-an-hour zones, one for a school district, the other is Virginia Lake? When one goose decides to walk across, we got 13,000 cars that are going to be sitting there waiting for, for miles. I'm exaggerating, of course. This Planning Commission has carefully worked toward making the appearance of our city attractive to out-of-towners, worked on the, the bridge, repairing it, preserved the arch of the biggest little city. That's what surprises me, how this commercial enterprise, right in the middle of a residential area, has ever been approved. And now what they're looking to do is expand it. Putting this commercial enterprise in the middle of a residential district is ghetto. From Brooklyn, New York, that's what we call it. Some of the opposition to this in the past was, as a result, the proponents mentioned that they would remove, remove the sirens on the emergency vehicles. And this is, isn't that what sirens are for? To warn the children playing in the ball in the street? To warn the person walking across the street with the baby carriage? I mean, that's ridiculous to be, to not use the sirens on emergency vehicles. So that in itself, that they wanted to do that, and I recall that, I was here at the council meeting when this was presented to the council, and they wanted, they chose to remove the sirens in order not to disturb the residents, which is foolish, in my opinion. So in, in, in general, let's see, the commercial, it's, it's a bad idea, and I'm hoping that this commission denies the request. Thank you.
Okay. Carl, thank you. Appreciate the comments, especially the one about the Virginia Street Bridge. Appreciate the comments, especially the one about the Virginia Street Bridge. Juanita Cox.
I just acquired two units in the Beck building, and I have a condo in the front Lakeside building. And so there's a number of, as some of our residents understand, lots and lots of traffic. And it is moving at various rates, like the gentleman before me said. On the Mountain View, you have lots of congestion. You have the dog park. You have kids. It's very, 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 very narrow there. And you have the ducks and the geese and the whatevers. There's a major school bus area on that corner of Mountain View and Lakeside in the mornings when the school is in session. At that intersection, there's also a problem I've reported to the city of the parking, and there's not enough red zones there. So you've got people veering out into traffic, trying to bypass parked cars there as well. Beck Street, you have, in fact, we just had ambulances and fire and lots and lots of police cars this week. There's two incidences right there in our building. Beck Street, it already appears to me over capacity, and since I have a corner condo there, it's impossible. So lots of people get angry. They go from Beck, and they zoom through our parking lot getting over to Brinkby. We're creating more problems. You also aren't, or their figures are not considering the new buildings, multifamily buildings that are going over on Lakeside as well. So those are not going to be counted in their traffic patterns. To me, to count the traffic of the employees, which unfortunately will be coming off of Beck, is kind of ridiculous when you're going to have lots of trips. These are people that are in trouble. So you're going to have more emergencies trips than they are estimating. They're thinking that these are based on the employees. I don't think so. It's the patients that have the problems, and that will have emergency vehicles going in and out, trying to dodge children, dogs, trucks, animals. It's, to me, an insane thing to do that, put that all together in one big mess, when this is a residential area, and it should be. My neighbors have also asked that, mentioned that even though there's not all the people that are living in the new 44 unit, that many of them are coming now and using our facilities for their dogs' bathrooms. And we do not appreciate that, so we're not even talking about other things. But it's a real impact on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Juanita. Donna Keats. And next up is Ken Crater.
I'm Donna Keats. I'm a resident of Country Club Acres, only about two blocks away from this unfortunate entrance to the new facility. And I didn't have a well-prepared speech because I didn't have time, but I want to point out a couple of things for you guys to consider. A, we can start with this thing about moving the zoning, because that's silly. So if they're going to move the zoning, they're just moving it from here, but we're not taking the architectural standards with us. We're wiping out all the existing architectural standards, putting different ones in. That disturbs me. There's language in here. I went to, like, all the public meetings. I've been doing this with Ken since 2007. It's really been awful. I'd love to see him do something with this so I can stop coming to meetings. But the stuff about the traffic, I noticed staff says they want to take the 497 count on beds. Okay, we went, I went to all these public meetings that they mentioned or sent letters to everybody along the way. They've been talking about 300 people based on employees. This is just for the, you know, what we're talking about. He's talking about almost 500. Subsequent to the NAB, I've been trying to get information about staffing matrices, blah, blah, blah. Got an email from somebody at Plum Health who says, oh, yeah, we start out at 30 employees, but we end up at 60. Plus, we do all these ancillary services. 25% of our residents get X many visits a week. I ran the numbers on that. It's really not 30 employee count. This is not right data. And then I got an excruciatingly lovely breakdown of the staffing matrix from Angela about six weeks after I asked for it, and took her a long time to get what she needed for it. It's a beautiful job. That doesn't appear in here anywhere, but that actually shows average employees of 46 a day, not 30. So what I'm annoyed with is there are so many things in here where the premise has been put out there in one way. We've been hearing nothing about architectural craftsmen. You look in this, compare it to the old document, language is wiped out. It's now a creative interpretation of some sort of combo style of craftsmen and ranch, whatever that means, because we don't know. You know? Fencing heights are no longer five to six feet. They're maximum of six feet, so we don't know how low they'll go, things like that. Five-year, the five-year language that got added, brand-new, we've never seen that before, about if in five years, if they can't get it together in five years, Mike, I'm sorry, then they shouldn't be getting the zone changed. That's all. You know, if there's not enough need, they don't need to come back. If we got five years on the thing and nobody can get it together, then this thing should revert to the low density. Also like to point out that one of the things that council didn't like about this last proposal of theirs was that it was a more intensive use. I think they should, the burden of proof is on them to demonstrate that it's not a more intensive use than what's currently approved on that three-acre property, which I don't think this does. I think they've done a beautiful job. Don't hate them, but I read the stuff in here today, and yet again, there's a whole bunch of stuff that just doesn't make sense with everything we were told. I'm disconcerted by that, because I can't put together the information I've gotten. It doesn't make sense. The traffic report, nothing's updated in the thing. So what's in your documents? I have more information than you have. It's not right for you to make a decision on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Ken Crater? And next up, I have Mike Carano.
All right. Good evening. For the record, my name is Ken Crater. I'm one of the owners of this property. We bought this property back in 2006, and looking back, I should have just used the existing zoning and built apartments along Beck Street and residential back, because it would have been a whole lot easier and saved me 10 years. But we spent a lot of time working with the residents of this area, and what we kept hearing is they were concerned about overcrowding at Anderson Elementary, they were concerned about parking on the adjoining streets, they were concerned about too many people populating Virginia Lake Park. So we worked with the neighborhood through the years and developed the concept of doing senior housing, because senior housing doesn't impact schools, it doesn't generate much traffic into the parks, and furthermore, the current project before you, which is assisted living and memory care, is actually a residential use. People live in these facilities for two years. And so we felt, and we felt the neighbors at the time agreed, that senior care probably made more sense on the site than anything else we can do. And since then, we've worked very hard to come up with a project to absolutely minimize the impact to all the residents in the neighborhood. And as an example, sure, there's going to be traffic on Beck Street, sure, there's going to be traffic on Mountain View, but if we'd use the existing zoning when we bought the property along Beck Street, there was two acres of multifamily, 30 dwelling units per acre. We could have come in and built 60 multifamily units, which would generate 360 trips on Beck Street. So to think there's not anybody impacts of any project just isn't true. There's going to be development on this site, so we feel that this is the highest and best use of the site. It's high quality, and one of the good things we have going for us now is we have a project that was built under the existing PUD, which is Matthew Fleming's Northern Nevada Community Housing Resource Board project for veterans, which just opened recently, and we have the ribbon cutting, and it's absolutely a beautiful facility. And I think that facility speaks to the quality of architecture, landscaping, and site design that is going to result from this PUD handbook. And that's going to be carried forward with the assisted living and the memory care facilities. We've listened to the neighborhood again. We eliminated all the parking along Mountain View, such that now we have a 30-foot landscape strip with an earthen berm and a lot of landscaping along Mountain View Drive. And at the end of the day, I think if you look at the impacts of this project compared to what we could have done under the original zoning, the impacts are less. There's going to be less traffic, less impact to the park, no impact to the neighborhood school, per se. And so we do believe this is a quality project in terms of things like ambulance trips. The ambulances actually have a policy, as well as the fire department, that they turn off their sirens when they enter a residential neighborhood. But again, even if you had single-family apartments, you'd have ambulance trips. So we feel this is a great project, and when all said and done, everybody's going to look at and go, you know what? I'm actually happy with that project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Mike Carano? Next up, I have Sandy De Silva.
My name is Mike Carano, and I just wanted to come and speak in support of this project. My family has been in the area, owned property in the area since the early 20s, lived there all our lives. We currently have approximately still 17 residential units on Lakeside from the corner of Mountain View south, the duplexes on the west side of the street, and then also residential units on the east side of the street from East Shore down to the vacant property. I've been following this project since it started, as it's outlined from 2008, and have been keenly interested in what gets built on this due to the nature of our investment in the surrounding properties. And I've been impressed with the way this project has been developed in the consultation of neighbors and neighborhoods in trying to get the best project for the remaining property that's on the area. And I think the development of this, the senior assisted living and the memory care facility is an excellent use of this property, highest and best use. I think it's something that's sorely needed by the community to provide that level of care for citizens that need it in that area. I think the architectural design is very appropriate and will enhance the value of the property. And so I just wanted my family and me both fully support the approval of this project.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sandy De Silva?
Sandy was unable to attend, but she asked that I...
Would you like to come forward and why don't you just...
I think it's attached, the information that she...
Ah, sure is.
Just read that into the record.
I will read what Sandy had into the record. Thank you for pointing that out. So Sandy wishes to say, "I wish to go on record in support of Ken Crater's project on Mountain View Drive. He has made every change we have asked for over the years, and I believe the roadblocks should be lifted now. We should get his project underway before he gets fed up and sells the property to someone who would not be willing, so willing and patient to work with those of us who reside in the neighborhood. Please let this be the last hurdle and approve the project as it stands. Thank you." Sandy De Silva, 290 Mountain View Drive. Thank you. And I have another one from Carmen Gage, who has indicated, does not wish to make a statement, but is in favor. And Arlene Sala also does not wish to make a statement, but is in favor. Anyone else wanting to make a comment on this? Please come forward, and when you're done, if you could fill out a pink comment card, we'd appreciate it. Thanks.
My name is Mike Craspen. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association at Lakeside Plaza. First, I'd like to commend the group who's put this together. They have reached out to the public, to us for the first time. But the main complaint always has been traffic, and that hasn't changed. They talk about Lakeside. There's no egress into this facility from Lakeside. It's only Beck, which is really a dead end, or really an extended cul-de-sac, is all it is. And Mountain View, which isn't really a street, it's only two-thirds probably as wide as a street. It's a lane. Traffic, and then just south of Beck is a grammar school with, I don't know how many kids there, but they're all over the place in mornings and in the afternoon. I don't know what can be done. I realized they were going to build it, but traffic has to be a concern. And there's no parking on Beck now. There's less parking because of the, or there'll be less parking because of the apartment facilities. There's no parking on Mountain View. It's just access, access, access. It's not the facility itself. It's getting in and out of the facility is the problem. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Last call for public comment. Before I close it, bring it back to the commission for questions. Who'd like to start? Commissioner Marshall?
Thank you. Question for Jeff. Essentially, it looks like there's a trade-out of the independent living and some of the memory care units for assisted living.
Yeah, yes, that's, so essentially, the way the handbook would work is this would be an alternative to replace those. The option to build the 12 independent living cottages in the memory care facility still would exist within the handbook, so the applicant could go that direction if they would like. The alternative would replace it with the 82-bed assisted living and 32-bed memory care.
I mean, 12 is not a big number, but any information that you have on, is the city with, short on independent living units? Do we have any information regarding that?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I can tell you that with the growing senior population, not only within the city of Reno, but throughout the country, that senior housing, no matter what type of senior housing, is in demand.
Thank you. I want to move on to parking.
Sure.
Can you talk to me about the, it's above the minimum required? Can you just tell me why that is?
Sure. So as both Ken Crater and Angela mentioned, this has been an ongoing process since at least 2008, and the residents surrounding the property have mentioned numerous times that they're concerned with regards to parking. And so normally, when you're working with a PUD, you at least want to start with the code standards and not be worse than that. But it is a PUD, so they can write their own standards. This is their opportunity to craft development standards that would help get them to where they want to be. So code does require a far, far less parking spaces. I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I can find that for you. 6.6 per bed. This is proposing .675 per bed, which leads to far more parking. And the intention behind that is to ensure that there is not any overflow parking into the surrounding neighborhood. And there would be a shift changeover at certain times, so for a brief moment, three times a day, there will be employees that will be utilizing the parking at various different times. So the goal was to not have people parking on either Mountain View, Beck, or in the surrounding neighborhood.
Excuse me. And so that somehow, that concern got to seven, I think it's 77 spaces versus 18. Was there any, the average shift is 30, so you double it to 60, then you add 17 for safety? Or what was the, how was that calculated?
Yeah, sure. So the applicant provided studies for numerous facilities that they have throughout the United States and similar type of facilities, and they base their parking ratio on how those operate, an average of how those facilities operate.
Just, is my understanding that fundamentally, we're trying to drive towards less parking than more parking in terms of overall city goals and the perspective to all that's impact related to transit and et cetera? Can you, does this represent a significant departure from where the city would like to go on parking?
So we take every project on a case-by-case basis, and yes, that is correct. We are trying to reduce parking in a number of different spots within the city. You'll find that within transit corridors or regional centers, or places that have access, ready access, within a walking distance to transit, have lower parking standards or the ability to have up to a 50% reduction in those cases. In this case, it doesn't. It's in a residential neighborhood primarily, single-family condominiums and apartments. And so the goal in this case is, was not to have any sort of impact on that residential, the surrounding residential neighborhoods that resulted from an overflow of parking. And so this truly, this... And so, this truly, this parking provided truly reflects their demand so that we can ensure that there's not going to be that overflow.
Thank you. Other question for Angela?
Sure.
Hello.
Hi.
Is this level of parking, you think, critical to success at the next level of approval?
We can reduce the parking. I guarantee you, every neighbor will be upset. One of the reasons we added more parking is per code, we only need eighteen. If at our highest peak shift, we have thirty employees, that doesn't even make sense, right? You have eighteen parking spaces, and you have potentially thirty employees. Where are all the visitors parking? So, we took a step back and said, "That doesn't make sense." When we did the community outreach, one of the concerns we heard was, you know, when I go visit my aunt so-and-so or grandma so-and-so, there's never enough parking. So, they said, "We want to make sure that people aren't parking on Mountain View and on Beck Street." So, we made sure and put in enough parking. And again, it was based on, for this user, they have other facilities, so they could actually say, "Here's realistically, for a facility of this size, we can better estimate how many employees we're going to have and how many visitors we're going to have." So, we were able to back into these parking numbers. We can always take parking out if it's at the discretion of the commission to reduce the parking, but this was specifically done at the request of the neighbors.
And also, I noted, seemed to be at the request of Councilwoman Doerr to look at the parking as well.
She, yeah, especially when she came to several of our community meetings, she verbalized her concern over not having enough parking at these types of facilities and wanted to make sure we put in more than was proposed per code.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another question for Jeff. Jeff, we heard a few comments related to traffic during public comments, and that was one of the topics that came up in Angela's presentation and one of the ones that you discussed on the staff report. And daily trips are outlined, level of service is outlined in the staff report. One of the things that I try to think about when projects come before us or proposals is how it fits in with the community around it, kind of that, you know, taking a step up to the, maybe thirty, fifteen-thousand-foot level. We'll say, is there, can you give me a sense of what the other development potential is in this area that might bring the traffic from five sixty up to a thousand?
There's really not much development potential left in this area. There's a few lots along Lakeside that are either vacant or underutilized at this point that have the potential to be developed, one of which is proposed for a single-family subdivision of fifteen lots, which may be revised any moment and resubmitted back to us. But there's really not much left in this area in terms of development unless, for some reason, one of these apartment complexes goes away and gets redeveloped in some manner. So, it's going to be relatively similar to what you have now with may, maybe some slight increases here and there in terms of the overall traffic.
So, we're not looking at a scenario where this project is part of maybe an incremental increase in traffic over time like we see in other places in the city where, you know, we're looking at this project, but, you know, ten years down the road, you know, that traffic might be compounded by additional development. We're not looking at that kind of a scenario in the streets, Mountain View, Lakeside that we're looking at as part of this proposal.
You know, based purely on the ITE calculations, no? But there could be any circumstance that comes out and changes traffic generation over the course of a ten-year period. It's really hard to say, you know, there could be somebody that has, you know, lots of kids. So, we try to base everything based off of the ITE standards. And so, using that, I can't foresee massive amounts of change that would go through and trigger developments that would trigger those thresholds.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Royceke?
Thank you. Jeff, don't, no, go ahead. Have a seat. Angela, please. Angela, can we talk about, not necessarily trip generation, but the hours of trip generation, please? Can you give us an idea of what the hours of shift changes are?
There's three shifts, and they operate on a twenty-four-hour basis. So, the first shift and probably your busiest shift is going to be that six AM to two PM. They start at six and they leave at two. Then that second shift is more of the dinner shift. So, they start at two and they leave at ten PM. And then the evening shift, which has the fewest number of workers, is the ten PM to six AM. So, all of those are on your off-peak times. Generally, your peak time is when people are going to work in the, you know, seven to nine AM or the four to six PM. So, all of those shift changes are outside of those peak times.
So, those peak times will also miss school pickup and drop-off times or should miss them? I mean, they may be close, but the afternoon one is the one that might be closest, huh?
Right. The elementary school generally, I believe they operate, I think they start at nine fifteen and they get out around three fifteen. So, again, it definitely is on opposite schedule from the shift change as well.
Okay. How about visiting hours? We've heard about, you know, visiting and... The commission has, over the last few years, has heard several senior care facilities. What are the hours of operation for visitors?
Your typical visiting hours are more of the, like, eight AM. Sometimes they start as early as seven AM and go until about nine PM. That's on average. That's usually when they have a front desk person on staff. But because this is an assisted living facility, if I wanted to go visit someone, I can go anytime I want. But that doesn't mean you're going to have a staff person there. So, typically, you have to have a code to get in or you can get buzzed to get in. So, you're, generally speaking, your busiest visitor times are going to be usually at your meal times, like your lunchtime and your dinnertime, or on weekends or holidays.
Okay. All right. And we heard somebody in the audience mention flow-through traffic from Beck to Mountain View. And I've had the pleasure of sitting through every one of these proposals that the applicant has brought forward. Can you discuss why it's not a good idea to have a street between Beck and Mountain View and why there is a barrier across the parking lot, please?
One of the big concerns we heard during the community meetings over the last number of years was concerns over traffic on Mountain View and concerns over traffic on Beck Street. So, we tried to come up with a way to physically separate them so we could have some better guarantees of how many traffic trips we realistically would have. So, that's where we said, "All the employees will have to take Beck Street, and all the visitors will have to take Mountain View." One of the challenges, if you allow that access to go through the entire project, is you're going to have cut-through traffic. So, for instance, the condos to the south, if they wanted to quickly get to Mountain View, they could quickly just cut through the project. So, this eliminates that from happening. And same for traffic, if they wanted to come on the north from Mountain View and cut through rather than going around to Lakeside, you would get a lot of traffic from users that aren't there using the facility. It would just be side traffic that we're trying to eliminate. So, part of that has to go back to crime. You know, if you had people that shouldn't be in that area, this deters them from entering the parking lot because there's nowhere to go.
Okay. And will there be a connection from Beck to Mountain View for dog walkers?
There is a pedestrian connection. There's sidewalks that connect from Beck Street all the way to Mountain View, and that is open for public. It's not a gated area for, from pedestrian access. That is open, yes.
Okay. So, it's just precluding motor vehicles from passing between the two streets?
Correct.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner?
Follow Angela's here, and my question's on the traffic and the cut-through, too. You put up a slide up there that showed the ratio of how much employees were going to be causing traffic on Beck versus the visitors on the Mountain View. And I guess I'm just curious about, I was wanting to hear about the gate also. But that seems to push a lot more of the traffic to Beck, almost a five-to-one ratio. Is that before or after the apartments? Because that seems like that would be even more traffic on Beck. And I understand the concern that nobody wants traffic, but I guess, how did you address the less vocal people on the apartments on Beck there? How can you, I guess, it seems like a problem. And how do you reconcile that a five-to-one ratio just for this is appropriate split of the traffic?
Right. And for sure, you're going to have more traffic on Beck Street because you're guaranteed you're going to have employees versus visitors. That number is going to range. Again, on Christmas Day, you're going to have a lot of visitors versus your average Monday, you're not going to have as many visitors. So, we, but we did break that up specifically to deal with helping to quantify how much traffic would be on Mountain View versus Beck Street. So, you definitely are going to have more traffic on Beck. And I don't know if any of you have ever driven on Beck. It's basically a cul-de-sac. So, it's not a through street. It's just a side street off of Lakeside that ends in a cul-de-sac. The only one that's really served by Beck Street are the condos to the south, and then, of course, the new forty-four-unit apartment project to the north. So, that's the only access. I think there's maybe a couple smaller apartment or duplexes that access Beck, but it's not very many. So, it's not a street where you're going to get any new traffic past what we're generating now. It is considered a local street, so it does have that same standard of a thousand average daily trips, and we're well within that, almost half of that. So, there's definitely room to double the amount of traffic and still meet the code requirements. So, it, and from a numbers perspective, you're thinking, "Gosh, you know, that seems like a lot of traffic." But at the thirty-thousand-foot level, when we have to look at traffic as a whole, again, it's not that much traffic. So, it's easy for me to quantify to say it's not going to be that significant, and it's going to be at your peak times. So, while a lot of those people that live in the Lakeside condos are going to work during your peak times, they're not going to be impacted by the traffic because those shift changes are at different times.
Okay. I guess, trying to get at, maybe, have you considered a way to make it more even split? That just seems all-on-one, and they're both, it's not that much traffic. Then, I think that a more even split would still be more appropriate.
In terms of maybe putting more employees off of, having more employees come off Mountain View?
Employees, guests, whoever it may be.
Mm-hmm. And that's something I think we could discuss. At this point, this was an easy break for us to say, "All the employees have to come off one street, and all the visitors have to come off another." Because we put that gate in there, that was the physical barrier to separate them. But that's something we could be open to, if there was any way to regulate that.
Sure.
Commissioner Levis, one of the things that came up a lot through these early discussions was the narrowness of Mountain View versus the width of Beck Street. And so, one of the concerns that the applicant took into consideration when preparing this version was to ensure that not so much was being pumped out onto Mountain View due to the narrowness of the width of the street. So, that was one of the considerations they also had.
I can add one more element if you give me a minute.
Sure, yeah. That's, I'm just trying to get the balance because, again, the, certainly, the neighbors have spoken, but I guess my concern is that the group of neighbors to the south maybe aren't as active.
Yeah, it's a great question. Again, for the record, Ken Crater, we looked at the potential of splitting up the employees to create a more equitable split. But there's two issues. One, there's no really good place to do it without negatively affecting fire circulation through the site. But the other concern is the only place we could really split it up, there'd be a, you know, small number of employee parking. Let's say all the employees go, "Wow, this is where I really like parking," and they go in there as not an employee space. All of a sudden, they're parking on Mountain View, which is one thing we don't want. Because I guarantee you, in fact, I have a neighbor sitting next to me in the audience said, "Don't reduce the number of parking spaces." That's a huge deal to the neighborhood. So, we felt that the split we did was a good compromise with traffic, given the fact that, again, the peak hour times of the shift changes do not coincide with the peak hours of the normal vehicle traffic. But it just works in terms of circulation, emergency access, and making sure that we don't have anybody in this facility with any need whatsoever to park on Mountain View or Beck. So, it was just a compromise to make the whole site work and fit with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Royceke?
Mr. Chairman, this is probably more for discussion than for question, but to add to that, Commissioner Levis, over the years of listening to the different applicants' presentations and having this chamber full of residents from the area, not just Country Club Acres, but from all of the area, there's a lot of traffic and parking already just based on the park and the dog park besides Virginia Lake users. And because of that narrowness of the street, I remember several times what can be done about minimizing and limiting the amount of access and parking that would be added to what's already busy for the existing public facilities provided by the city of Reno. And this is, this is the end result of listening to, from the applicant's design perspective to the commissioners and city council reviewing this for parking and limiting the access. So, it's really kind of a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Angela, could you put the slide back up there that compares the existing plan? That's the one. So, trying to tie some of these questions together in terms of basically what's proposed tonight versus what's already approved, which is how, to be honest, it's how I'm having to look at it. Are we, what are we doing as an impact on the neighborhood based on what's already been approved? Because we can't, we're not going to educate what's on the left side of the screen up there. So, based on what we have now in the adopted plan, we have six one-story cottages in the front for twelve units. And if I'm reading it right, is that a forty-eight or forty-four, forty-eight-bed memory care? So, assuming, I'm looking at it in terms of the numbers of beds that we're putting in there. And if we assume, I'm going to say, two occupants per cottage, fair statement, we're looking at twenty-four beds for the cottages and forty-eight for the memory care. So, I'm doing that on the fly, but we're, what, seventy-two in terms of the number of beds? The proposal that we're looking at now has a hundred and fourteen total beds. Is that not what's driving the increase in traffic between what's currently approved and what is proposed tonight? Is it the additional beds that are driving the uptick in traffic?
Two ways to look at it. If you go based on number of employees, your employee count is going to go down because your need is going down. So, for the assisted living, they don't need as much as, need as many employees, for instance, as they would if it was a skilled nursing or more intense memory care. So, that's part of it. If you go based on bed count, just bed count alone, then by traffic, we would generate more traffic with the proposed project than the one that's on the left side there.
Okay. So, and I'm not going to get into the traffic part just yet. Based on what's on the currently approved, it appears, and I know this is, you know, not what's before us, but the gate separating the two projects between the apartment living and what would be the beds is actually located right at the edge of the parking area to the apartments, the forty-four-unit apartment complex. So, in that scenario, all of the traffic based on the cottages and the forty-eight beds would be accessing on Mountain View, and there would be no additional traffic to Beck. So, basically, what's proposed before us now is increasing the traffic on Beck, whereas there would be no additional traffic on Beck based on what's already constructed. Is that correct in terms of what I'm looking at?
Yeah. Do I have a, I can't point to anything, can I? Here we go. Okay. So, on the existing, what's approved today is your gate is down here. So, there's no distinction in the handbook based on what's approved today of where the employees versus the visitors park for this whole development. So, all of that traffic would be coming off of Mountain View based on what could be built today. And then, versus what's proposed, we have a gate that's in this area here. And then versus what's proposed, we have a gate that's in this area here. And so that's where you're separating where you have the visitor parking here and the employee parking here.
Right, and I understand that aspect of it. So based on what's proposed tonight, the traffic on Beck will have to increase because all the employees are going there. In the existing scenario, there is no added traffic to Beck because there's a gate between all of the development that would be not yet on site.
Correct. And per the handbook, all of that traffic, right, would come from Mountain View, not Beck Street. The forty-four unit apartments would still access from Beck Street.
Correct. So the scenario, the situation that is existing on site right now would remain. So then, based on that, is there, I guess, what we're proposing, what's proposed here is basically increasing the number of beds by twenty-five percent, thirty percent?
Hundred and fourteen minus the seventy-two.
So we've got an additional forty-some-odd beds.
Whatever that math is, yes.
So I guess then to lead into the parking conversation, and I guess this is gonna be a conversation that Jeff may need to help with, there's some information in the staff report, and I'll maybe pose it first to you, that indicates that the standards that are in the handbook, both what's existing and what's proposed, are more restrictive than if the site was to default back to the city's zoning code. Now, I understand that the back two acres of this is now a multifamily project. Based on reverting back, what is the, what would be or what was the zoning for that front three acres that abuts Mountain View?
Let me pull it up real quick.
Are you looking for the parking, Commissioner Johnson, or the actual pre-zoning prior to the handbook?
I'm looking for the pre-zoning prior to the handbook because that's the conversation that is, what we're looking at here, is a point of comparison.
So prior to the handbook, I don't necessarily know about the north three point two acres. I could tell you what the, what the whole site was prior to the handbook. I don't have the exact layout of what those are. But it was one point nine one acres of MF thirty, which is a thirty dwelling units per acre, two point six nine acres of single-family residential with a nine thousand square foot lot minimum, and point five acres of single-family residential fifteen thousand square feet.
Okay, so based on that, I guess what I'm trying to get at, there's a lot of conversation that's happening tonight about traffic and locations of traffic. And what I'm seeing in terms of what's being presented tonight is a project that is increasing the amount of traffic overall from what's currently approved, but taking that increase and splitting it across the two roads. I'm trying to understand if nothing changed, or if this wasn't a discussion, how, you know, is there a finding that, or is there a development that's happening here that is, you know, we're, I just lost my train of thought. But anyway, that's the, the number of existing zoning that was there, and Mr. Crater alluded to it, and it's in the staff report, that what we're proposing here is actually a reduction over what is potential if this PUD never came into play. And I'm trying to get some things on the record here for us to review and for us to discuss with respect to the traffic.
Yeah, and without doing traffic calculations on the fly, because we did compare the PUDs to each other, the various different iterations of the PUD, rather than the prior zoning prior to the PUD, I didn't really take that into consideration. But with that being said, an MF thirty on one point nine one acres would yield slightly less than sixty dwelling units on that site. Now, when taking into account parking landscaping, you would get a little bit less than that. But that would generate substantial amounts of traffic when, when also looking at the fact that you would also get several residential units as well, single-family residential units.
Okay. I think I'll bring some of that, I'll table that for a minute. I think the other question I have, and this one's for Angela, again, with two comments with respect to the scale of the building. The change is before us tonight is to essentially provide a single building that has both a two-story and a single-story component. However, the single-story component is located on the back half of the project where there's already multi-story development as opposed to the north half of the project where it's the single-family and more residential in scale. Why did you choose that as the layout for the building?
And that had more to do with the configuration of the use. Because we're doing the memory care and the assisted living, they have to be two separate facilities, all within the same building. The needs of the memory care and having them, I would say, closed off so that they can't leave freely, made it so that it was better located in back of the building versus the assisted living where they're free to come and go, we don't have to worry about, because of memory issues, them leaving the facility and wandering. It was, had to be set up that way.
And then there was a comment this evening with respect to changes to the architectural standards within the handbook. I also saw the cottage compatible, or the terminology that was there. As an architect, I love the flexibility of having something that's compatible, because I can stretch that a long ways. But I think that, I guess my question is, what, what are you, what is the intent behind changing that based on what was already there, reviewed, approved, discussed in the past?
When the handbook was initially approved back in two thousand eight, they called it a certain theme, craftsman style, I believe is what they called it. You can interpret craftsman differently. And so as we kind of worked through the look of the building, we said, you can call it whatever you want, but let's just make it a good-looking building. Whether it's Tahoe craftsman style, that theme came up at one time, more, you know, nineteen fifty's craftsman style. The whole point of the architectural requirements was to make the building look like the renderings. So we tried to put in some language that better fit with what the, the style that it had, you know, with the gables and some of those features. So we tried to call those out, but we really didn't feel that it fit in with what maybe some of us would coin as a craftsman-style building, so much as to say, here's some of the features that it should have, here's the types of materials it should have, and it should look like this figure included in the handbook. The previous approval had, I would call it more of a vanilla-looking building compared to what we've achieved today. So we tried to find something that fit in more with the neighborhood. And even when we looked at all the houses in the surrounding neighborhood, really no houses alike. It's not like your typical subdivision today where every fifth house looks alike. It's really a very unique neighborhood where every house is different.
So was the apartments that have been created now, is that the aesthetic that you're going for? Is that the craftsman-compatible style with respect to the gables and the exposed wood trim and the varying material palette on the exterior?
I would say it has elements of those, and I would even consider that, that building more of a contemporary craftsman-style architecture versus what we're proposing. But again, there's just elements of it that we felt we saw more in the neighborhood that we tried to just tie into the building.
But based on the language that's in the PUD, some interpretation similar to, I mean, the rendering is the rendering, but it's a PUD rendering. The final interpretation could be something that's more on the contemporary side or some, I mean, it's, it's subject to, obviously, interpretation in terms of where that's at. So, but that is, the intent is to open it up a little bit, but not be so restrictive. Is that why you're trying to give it some parameters, but not specific direction?
And really, correct. Really, the, the final design should look like the rendering. So regardless of what the words are, whether we call it craftsman, whether we call it contemporary Tahoe craftsman, the rendering is what the building should look like at final design. So that should be the lead, that at the final design, that the building resembles more so than I would say the words. Because that truly, in my mind, it really is open for interpretation. But if there are certain elements, I think that the commission likes or doesn't like, whether you want stone or brick, whether you like blue or warm earth tones, that's the kind of language that we can put in the handbook and revise the rendering before it goes to city council to reflect those changes.
Okay, well, I'll leave that discussion up to my fellow commissioners. I think that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Okay. Questions? Commissioners, other questions before we get into discussion? Commissioner Johnson, you are on a roll. You wanna keep going? Plus, I enjoy hearing you talk about architecture.
I would, I would like to gather my thoughts for a moment if somebody else would like to take the lead on the discussion. Thank you.
I would just say, Commissioner Gower, that echoing some of the comments that have been made during question and answer, I think that the applicant has done a good job of engaging the community, working to incorporate the design aspects to be compatible with the neighborhood, to address traffic concerns. We've got the speed humps in there now on Mountain View in terms of pedestrian environment. You know, I think a lot of improvements have been made there since the last time that we saw it, a year ago. You know, a lot of the concerns that I remember having at this time last year have really been checked off. So for all the feedback that we've heard tonight and some of the concerns that were raised during public comment, I'm personally feeling pretty good about it. I'd be curious to hear where the other commissioners stand, if there's another opinion. Mr. Rowinski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will echo your sentiment and your comments. This is, but I will add to it. This is a neighborhood that I regularly frequent. I ride through it weekly, bi-weekly, as I live a mile away from it, just south of it. And when I saw it back on the agenda, I was very concerned and, because I hadn't seen anything being built. And knowing what the neighbors and the developer have gone through over the last, probably, you know, close to fifteen years, twelve years anyways, I was glad to see that there were elements that were not removed from this. When I say elements, I'm talking about architectural elements, because that was a major, of major discussion during previous applications. The process of how the business operates within the neighborhood, I consider an apartment building or rental units a business also. This, to me, is no different. It, it just requires that additional employees be here to assist medically with the people that are living here. So I think it still fits very well into the neighborhood. I think it, it addresses the concerns of safety, especially when it comes to the area of Mountain View and the parks and the dog park and, and all of that very well. I was glad to see how that was being dealt with. And actually, bringing some more traffic south is an issue. It's a small street, it's a cul-de-sac, but I don't think it's a great deal of issue compared to what the property is zoned for and what could be built there. It could be a lot worse with a three-story apartment building or, or some other combination thereof. So I'm in favor of what is being proposed to us tonight.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners want to weigh in? Commissioner Johnson, any other comments?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I've been on the fence about this one from, for a while now. There's a couple of things that are, I guess, maybe problematic. And part of it is, Commissioner Levis alluded to it in his questions, there's kind of two different, I hate to say neighborhoods, but there really is a little bit of a separation that this project bridges. There's the higher intensity use that's off of Beck, and the sightlines coming off of Beck onto Lakeside are problematic. The parking up there is challenging. And adding, you know, the, the traffic amounts that we're adding, I agree, they're not significant, but they are additional traffic. The Mountain View side is different because it's more single-family residences. But the problem I have with the Mountain View side, and that was why I wanted Angela to answer the question in terms of the, the change in where the traffic is gonna go, Mountain View has become probably more problematic since the dog park has been constructed. There's no on-street parking on Mountain View, but everybody parks on the street, gets out on the driver's side with their dogs. So, you know, I drive a small car, most of you know that. A rottweiler getting out of a car would basically take out my car, and it has almost happened. So any additional traffic on Mountain View, whether it's this project, the proposed project, or a future project, is problematic. So I guess that's where I'm, I'm struggling with this in the sense that what's proposed before us tonight actually reduces the number of trips out onto Mountain View, which I feel is a good thing, at the expense, unfortunately, of more traffic on Beck. Having said that, I think there are some components that existed in the original plan with the cottages and the transition. And that was the second question for Angela with respect to the single-story stepping back to the two-story, which is one of the comments that we always come into when we're transitioning from a lower density to a higher density, that the scale should reflect the same thing. There's two ways to do that. One is to rearrange the building, which I agree with Angela's comment, is probably not the best thing to do. The other is to reduce the number of beds in the assisted living down to a comparable bed count to what's in there currently, which would eliminate the need for a two-story building. And that's where I was getting at with the increased intensity and use, is the sense that if what was before us this evening was a lower count assisted living care, thirty-two bed memory and another forty beds of assisted living care, we would be looking at a project that has a lower number of parking or lower number of traffic on both roads and would have the advantage of retaining some of that single-story transition back to the multi-story in the back. So I guess where I'm coming down on this is that, and again, that's where I'm struggling, and I'm throwing this out there for additional discussion, there's benefits to what's being proposed there with respect to traffic, but there's issues with what's being proposed there based on the physical interaction with the neighborhood. And so at this point, I'm not sure I can make the findings that are in here with respect to the impact of this on the neighborhood because it, it, it has an impact regardless of which way we go. So if we did nothing tonight, if we did not allow for this to happen, if we did not move to approve it, what's on the left is what is approved for that, which is acceptable to the neighborhood. It was approved previously. It actually sailed through the, the last time because the change from the skilled nursing facility to the apartments was actually a benefit both housing-wise and trip-generation-wise. And so what we're now doing is we're turning around and we're adding trip generation, and we're doing that in multiple locations. So there's some findings that need to be made in the back here that, based on what I'm seeing there, what, I, I, I just, I don't know that I can agree to the fact that, you know, all of this has no impact on the existing, the existing community around there. So I will then, having said that, step back and applaud the developer for all of the, I mean, I was at one of the community meetings that it I mean, I was at one of the community meetings that did a wonderful job of presenting this and working with everyone. But in a situation where you have such disparate interests, it's a challenge to try to walk that line. And I think the initial concept, excuse me, did that in a way that was acceptable to the neighborhood at the time. So I, I think, you know, I'm looking at it. I'm interested in hearing some other feedback. But that's, those are the comments that, that I would have on that.
Great comments. Thank you. Commissioner Marshall, you want to chime in?
Yes, thank you. Those were very thought-provoking comments. And, you know, initially, my main issue is how parking was developed for this, for this site. I realize that the, the, you know, strict application of the rules of the city results in a number that is not particularly realistic. On the other hand, I think it's a terrible precedent to set that we, you know, basically look to the project proponent and ask them to settle with their, the project opponents to come up with a parking number and then put that in the, the PUD. It's, it's not a good way to derive parking. I realize that they looked at, at their other operations and came up with a number. But if our ultimate objective is to drive different types of, of, you know, transit and good planning, I don't feel like that's an appropriate way to go. But on the other hand, this project has been around and it seems like this is a critical element of the project. And so I don't, you know, I just would voice my objection, but not as a basis to, to say no. As to, or to vote no, as to Commissioner Johnson's points, I understand kind of where you're driving. The problem that I have with then, where, at what point do you say, I mean, you're eventually, you're essentially applying a standard that you can't approve anything for the use on the site. And I think that's problematic because you're saying that the condition is already unacceptable and any, any special use finding that, or that generates more traffic is going to have an adverse impact. Now, this will generate more traffic than, than the proposal on the left. It is an alternative. And so the question is, should we exercise our discretion to say, we really only think you should do this level of, you know, the level on the left as the acceptable level of traffic and nothing that intensifies traffic? But intensifies how much? Because I have a hard time pegging as to what, what that should be. To me, it really raises the question of to the degree that you should amend PUDs to intensify use after you've already gone through an approval process. That to me is kind of the larger issue that resonates. But, you know, I, I understand that there's a significant impact in the neighborhood. Is it, is it adverse enough, even though you're well within your LOS standards, to say that you shouldn't move forward with this particular version is the problem I have of line drawing? Where do you, you know, what's acceptable, what's not?
Commissioner Johnson?
I just want to respond to that. Actually, I think what you, you pointed out was maybe a more succinct way of what I was trying to say, that I, I guess what I'm having, what I'm being asked here is to determine if what's already been approved, if what we're recommending now does not have any additional adverse effect to what's already been approved. And that's the question that I have to make. And where I'm going with that is that I think it has pros and cons. And if we didn't do anything, I wouldn't change what's already been approved. And I would not advocate to go away from that. That was something that was put together and approved by this body and approved by council. And I'm not suggesting in any manner that that should be changed. I'm just questioning whether what's presented before us tonight is an improvement upon that to allow me to make the findings that are listed in here for what's going on. So I appreciate you actually succinctly saying what I couldn't do.
Well, let me just, if I could, counter, or not necessarily counter, but then what do you base a decision on? You know, is there any deviation that the project developer could come forward that has an, you know, a traffic, additional trips that don't trip a standard that the city uses to measure, you know, an adverse impact? Is it just the additional gen, trip generation from a project that's an alternative to what's already been approved? So you're basically saying that you're setting that as the capacity. You know, the, the, with the twelve units, the, the project on the left is what's setting the ceiling and you can't go above that with your alternatives?
I would, no, I think what I'm doing is I'm trying to avoid making this only about traffic. I think there is, there's a finding, it's number six, that we have to make as a finding of fact required for approval of PUD. And I have to find that the relationship beneficial or adverse of the proposed planned unit development to the neighborhood in which it is proposed to be established. I have to determine if there's a modification of the PUD that it doesn't have an adverse effect. If the existing PUD has an adverse effect, that's a situation that's existing. I would have to review this. And so I guess what I'm looking at is what's proposed before us increases traffic on Beck and eliminates the architectural mod, or architectural transition from the low density to the high density. So based on that, and not even bringing into account the fact that it's a higher traffic use, because it's actually a lower traffic use on Mountain View than what is out there now. But it is impacting in other ways what's a finding that I have to make. So those are the points that I'm looking at. So I'm not even looking at it as a threshold of what would or would not be acceptable. It's just that what's being proposed has an impact.
Commissioner Johnson, I'm going to play devil's advocate to your line of reasoning. And I'm going to ask, why do you need to compare to the existing PUD? Can you make that finding based on the PUD as it stands and its ability to meet finding six or some of these other findings that we have to make, our zoning map amendment findings in, for the project in isolation of its, as it's proposed?
The, if I'm understanding the question correctly, the other time that I would have to make that finding is a question about changing from the base zoning in the city, which as Jeff pointed out, was three different versions of multifamily and single-family
Right.
to, into a PUD for that same five acres. So I would have had to make the finding initially that what's proposed in the PUD was a better situation than what would have been there originally. I was not on the commission at the time, so I can't speak to that. But then what I can use is the example of the change in 2015 where the skilled nursing facility with ninety-four beds was amended to be replaced by a forty-four-unit apartment that reduced the number of trips, but maintained those trips on the same roadway as was entirely included in the initial PUD. So based on that, I would say that that change would have been, would have met that finding because that would not have had an adverse impact. What I'm being asked to do now is to make the finding that we're changing from the existing PUD to a modified PUD. And I have to make that finding that that modification is still acceptable in the way I'm looking at the PUD. I believe that's, I'm understanding that correctly and I, I would defer to Claudia if I'm misunderstanding that, but that's the way that, that I read that.
And so again, to respond to that, for me, it's, you know, to simplify it of, you know, you talk about apples and oranges. For me, the image on the left is an apple and the image on the right is also an apple, but it's a slightly larger, maybe green versus a red apple. It's still, it's, and I, I don't want to dumb it down, but I mean, that's just how I'm thinking of it because it's, it's one variation of what could be there versus another variation of what could be there. And for me, both of those variations allow me to meet the findings. So I'm just, I'm questioning why they need to be compared to each other. And I understand that they're up there on the screen and we had one approved. But are the elements of the, the one on the right also sufficient to meet the findings? And I, I do appreciate the, the point that you made about the intensification of the use and the stories. And if you didn't have as many beds, you could have a, a single story that would create more of a transition. And I'd be curious to know where, if we go with that in our discussion, where that would take us with the applicant. I mean, that seems like that would be a fairly significant reconsideration. So I'd be curious to know where you were taking that one and how, kind of how adamant you were with that.
That, if I can respond, Commissioner Johnson, the, where I was going with that was that the intensification of the use between the two, between what's existing and what's proposed. The intensification of the use is the additional traffic and trips that are generated by the number of beds. So in the ten or twelve different traffic reports, and I have to admit, there was a lot of traffic reports in here that, you know, the comment was raised, trying to find your way through it. It was a challenge between beds and staff and everything else. What it boils down to is if there are fewer beds, there are fewer trips. If there are fewer trips, then the intensity that was increased by what's on the right is not increased. And then you're looking at, at more of a green apple to a green apple, to use the same analogy, where the change there is that I've got an increase to Beck, but I have, I have addressed the fact that my overall number of trips has not gone up and I'm maintaining the escalation in height from Mountain View to Beck with respect to the architecture. So however, that's not what's presented. I was using that as an example of a way to, you know, address the concerns that I have between the two of them. So a, a, again, this is a great discussion. I'm not sure how far, much further down the road we can go with it. It, it just comes down to the fact that I'm, we as a commissioner are being asked to add, because we're not eliminating the original approval. We're being asked to add this as an option for the PUD. And in order to accept that option of the PUD, I have to make these findings. And one of those findings that I have to make is that this doesn't have an impact on the, the neighborhood to which it's being established. And in my mind, what's being proposed does have an impact and I'm not sure that I can make the finding without, you know, with the impact that's being proposed.
Could I maybe ask?
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Wieski?
Sorry, Commissioner Marshall. The request before us is to add thirty-two-bed memory care and eighty-two-bed assisted facility as an alternate to the forty-eight-bed memory care and the twelve-unit independent living facility. So I understand what Commissioner Johnson's concern is. The difference that I see and that, and respectfully disagree with Commissioner Johnson and his thought process is there are not a lot of individuals staying in a memory care facility or an assisted care, assisted living facility who get in a car and drive away. We're talking about visitors. Where before, when there were twelve units of independent living taking place, there was a possibility that those people were still mobile and driving. So I see it as visitor traffic. Who knows what the actual, I mean, we, we still, from both staff and the applicant's representative tonight, have a best guess at what staff requirement is going to be as far as required parking spaces or what the level of staffing is going to be. And we didn't even talk about outside sources of staffing coming in for physical therapy or for insurance review process, for analysis of whatever the person's needs are that requires assisted living. So, you know, I still, my point is, is that I look at what's before us and the facts of what the traffic is and what the level of service is and has it changed the level of service? If you cut the anticipated trips out of here in half, I believe our level of service is still a D. Hasn't gone to a C. Didn't, didn't drop it to an F in what is being, in the increase that's being asked for, it's still a level D. So it hasn't changed. That's how I'm making the findings on traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marshall? I want to add just a little bit to that as, to articulate my, and the same thought process, but fundamentally comparing the two. You did point out that you're shifting traffic from Mountain View to Beck in the new, so you're actually relieving the, the amount of traffic that went on Beck, excuse me, on Mountain View by moving the gate. What is that, northward? And so it distributes the impacts differently than the alternative on the left. And the question, or I don't, I guess I, I don't have a problem with traffic. I'm not talking about the architectural features, but with traffic, saying that the, there is going to be additional trips onto Beck. The question is, is it significant or is it adverse so that you can't make this finding? And I think the other commissioner's point was, while you can add some traffic, you're not tripping any LOS from C to D, excuse me, from D to F or, you know, some significant change that, that leads to an adverse consequence. Problem that you have, I think, with saying, well, there's more trips, therefore it's going to be worse, leads you down a path that doesn't allow, you know, adjustments to the traffic pattern that, you know, a different type of project that may have merit on its own, you know, to be able to consider it. So that's why I don't have a problem with, with saying that you can make the consistency finding with the neighborhood based on the reallocation of traffic, because it's just kind of a different picture. Not in comparison to the one on the left, but really what are the impacts coming from the project on the right?
I don't, I don't disagree with what either of you have said in terms of making the finding with respect to level of service. And, and I think that's certainly, you know, a way of, i- i- it's the way that we, as the commission, are tasked with making the finding again and again. The only reason that I'm struggling with it on this one is that, as somebody pointed out, Mountain View is not a road. It's a lane. It's maybe twenty-four feet wide and it's got parking on one side. So to apply a level of service to that road that says, you know, any number of trips that it has now is acceptable versus not acceptable, that's a hard finding to make. And it may be that I can make that discussion because I drive on that road every day and maybe that's an issue. But I'm also, you know, here to represent the ward from which these people are at and which this is a concern. So I, that's why I'm saying I don't disagree with you at all. But in terms of having to look at that from an impact to the neighborhood, I have to be able to make that finding and that's what I'm struggling with. So I appreciate where you guys are coming from and, and you certainly have helped me articulate what I'm trying to say. So thank you.
Well, just to respond to you, Commissioner Johnson, I think you've raised some excellent points that have prompted some great discussion tonight. So it's definitely made us think a little bit longer and deeper about this one. So definitely appreciate that. I would be curious to see where a motion goes at this point and then maybe we can take it from there. And I would say that, you know, our role on this one is to build the record for the planning commission. So appreciate, you know, the audience's patience and everyone in the room as we built that record. And I think we've done a good job of that tonight. Commissioner Snyder?
Commissioner Snyder, in case number LDC one-seven-dash-zero-zero-zero-four-nine Sierra, Sierra Senior Care PUD Amendment. All right, let me put my glasses on so I can read this. Based on, based upon a compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend that city council approve the amendment to the design guideline subject to condition A as written below.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieski, I can second that and make all the findings.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See none? Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Commissioner Johnson opposed for the record. And we will move on. And we will move on. To item 7.4, this is a text amendment dash 00006, and it's regarding noticing for the adoption of the new master plan. Sienna, thanks for staying with us. Welcome.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, for the record. Sienna Reed, Senior Planner. The ordinance before you tonight amends Title 18 to include public notice requirements specific to the adoption of a new comprehensive master plan. Consistent with state law, the required public notice would be by newspaper publication at least 10 days in advance of the public hearings held by either the planning commission or the city council. The ordinance also specifies how adoption of a new comprehensive master plan is different than a master plan amendment. With a new master plan, all of the component parts are adopted at one time, and that's after an existing master plan is rescinded. And those component parts include not only the text associated with the master plan, any neighborhood plans, and a land use plan map. Staff does recommend that the commission provide council with a recommendation to approve this text amendment by ordinance. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions? Motion?
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead. Our, our, our newest commissioner has always had the opportunity to make one motion in the past on his first night.
I will, in just a second, if I could ask one question of council. What, and I talked a little bit with Sienna about this. Where I'm a little concerned about the way this is crafted is that it, it draws a distinction between a adoption of a comprehensive master plan and comprehensive amendments. And just because of where I, where I work, we do things that result in comprehensive changes that are short of a, you know, a total new master plan. And there are times in which this, you know, that you might want the flexibility to proceed on, you know, just notice by publication, and it might be more than a text edit. And does this, does a language, particularly a footnote 11, limit the ability of the city to proceed with comprehensive amendments that might not, you know, that might be more than a text edit, but less than a complete replacement of the plan? And so that's, that's what I was worried about by how footnote 11 is, is currently worded, that you are, you know, it has to be, in order to qualify for this, it has to be a complete, you know, you've got to rescind the prior plan and move to the second plan and adopt a new plan. If there, if that's not a concern of, of either council or staff, then I have no problem with the language that's drafted. That was just what I identified as, you know, that sometimes there's something that falls in between. And you may want the flexibility to go with noticing as opposed to, if it's more than just a text edit. I think Sienna's point was, she probably scratched her head and thought, what a stupid question, but there probably isn't such a creature. And because I work in a slightly different world, it may not, there may not be that creature where you, you trip the noticing requirements for a zone change or a, you know, something and, and you're left, you know, so it's, it's never going to happen, I guess. So I'll shut up before I make my motion.
So in terms of this general conversation, certainly, you know, there will be amendments to the new master plan moving forward, and some of those will be more substantial in nature than others. Consistent with current practice, what we would do with those master plan amendments is they would amend the new master plan that comes into place. And so it's basically, everything is an amendment to that plan. And so what is proposed in the ordinance tonight really solidifies what we do already. This is the, the process that was used for the 1997 plan adoption. And when we would look towards an amendment to what will be this new master plan moving forward, we would then fall back to the noticing requirements that would be in place for just a text amendment to the master plan. We would have notice by publication. If the amendment did happen to touch on a land use plan map, then we would have those additional enhanced noticing requirements above and beyond just notice by publication, notice by mail, site posting, et cetera. So generally, I, I think we're covered in terms of the substantive versus small nature of master plan amendments moving forward and just generally trying to solidify what's the practice that's in place today.
This amendment only deals with a total revamping, rescinding and adoption of a new code. Anything lesser than that, we've been given direction from the city council many times to notify, to provide all the noticing that we possibly can. Of course, we can't do that in this total amendment because we'd be putting up a sign up on every piece of property in the city of Reno. So this is consistent, we believe, with what the city council would like to do, recognizing that in the, in the case of a total replacement, we follow the state statute in noticing requirements. But anything less than that, we stick to what's already in our code.
May I make a motion? If you're prepared to. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council, that city council approve the text amendment by ordinance. Sorry, I should have said in the case of TXT 17-00006.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Commissioner Johnson, I'll second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That wraps up our public hearing items for this evening. So we will move on to item number eight, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Help me out, Commissioner Wieske.
We had a meeting two weeks ago. We actually discussed it last Thursday night. And so the update that I would bring to this meeting would be that we have a proposed meeting at the end of August. Date is uncertain until we get a email and posting from Kim Robinson.
Yes. And I would add to that, that they presented to us, regional planning staff did at the last meeting, their proposed schedule for the regional plan update process. And it sounds like they're going to be in the policy development phase as we approach mid to late fall. So something that the commissioners might, might want to just track going forward, that the update process is underway, but the, the meat of it will start in the fall. Okay?
If I can jump on in on this, just remember you're busy on August 30th as you go to set that meeting for the end of August.
Be certain. All right, staff announcements.
Since you just met less than a week ago and council is on break, I don't have any announcements at this time.
Okay, nothing in the last six days, Claudia?
No.
Okay. Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items. See none. Public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. I will open public comment. I do have a public comment card from Juanita Cox. Welcome back.
For the record, Juanita Cox, I've appeared twice before to the council, and since I was sitting here, I thought I'd just address you as well. Perhaps someone can hear me and actually do some kind of action. What the problem is, is on Lakeside, where Mountain View comes into Lakeside, where all that I've already discussed happens. There is, on the east side, going north, is a, the cement juts out. It should be painted red. When a vehicle parks on that area where the ice, don't fall in the ice, or ice is thin, or whatever it says about ice, but it's that, that intersection, it really is bad. And again, cars have to, going north, have to veer way out into the other oncoming traffic. You've got the traffic coming in from, from the west, going east from Mountain View. You've got children, you've got ducks, dogs, and everything. And it, it's so distracting that it's, needs to be painted red. So if this board can hear me, I've talked to traffic, I've talked to everyone, and please just paint the dang thing red and we'll all be a little safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Comment noted. Mr. Johnson, public comment?
As a response, Juanita, actually, have you talked to Councilwoman Doerr? She's aware of the issues on Mountain View and is looking at areas of additional red painted curb. I would suggest giving her a phone call. And if you touch base with me after this, I can actually give you her cell phone number.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comment? See none, I will close it, ask for a motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.